Good evening, Merrimack. Today is January twenty, I'm sorry, thirty first. I still got the old agenda. This is the Merrimack Villas District Board of Commissioners meeting. Public participation is offered by webinar. You can join the webinar by going to MBDwater.org and downloading today's agenda. And on that agenda, there's a web link that you can click on, or you can call six four six eight seven six nine nine two three, enter the webinar ID number eight one one four one nine four zero zero four one. As a courtesy, Merrimack TV is also recording the meeting and will be posted on their website at a later date, as well as played on typically on channel twenty, cable TV, channel twenty. So I'll call the meeting to order at five oh two PM. I ask everyone to rise from the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Alright, so we've got three commissioners in the room, Paul McLaughlin to my left, Wolf Von Sean to my right, I'm Don Preventure. We have joining us from, well, actually, John Lyons, you want to state where you are, where you're calling in from?
I am at my home in twenty five Windsor.
Great. Alright, sounds good. So first on the agenda is the finance, human resources review. Michelle is not here with us, so you can go ahead and get away.
I am Christian Mara. And so financials, we look December thirty first, twenty twenty two. If you look over to the revenue side, second page of the financials, just a couple of things to go over, particularly of interest is our interest income. Michelle had negotiated some better rates for us to see that our budget and our year-to-date will be significantly different.
Rates for what?
For our actual interest from the bank, T O A. They're looking at our whole account instead of each individual, which then gets us into a different bracket for higher interest rates. Keeping that in mind, as we go down through some of the other agenda items, that interest can offset the monthly billing, and we'll talk about in a little bit. Another thing is we got a service charge check for remain at Ketchum, Mannan, I believe it's called, which will be a new community. So again, that will, our budget of five hundred and the year-to-date is thirty five thousand, that is what is making that up.
What, what line items?
Sorry, the first interest is four zero four zero five. It's been interesting. And then four zero four zero eight is our service charge remains.
Oh, yeah.
And then also, if you look at four zero four one three, our entrances, you'll notice that a lot of our growth that's happening in Merrimack are coming to completion, so they're coming to and submitting for their entrance applications.
I have a question about that. So the service charges and so on, they're actually immediate revenue, right? So that they're not deferred revenues in any shape or form. They're recognized right away, right? But those are somewhat one-term, one-time impacts, right? But, but they actually have a long-term, you know, they're, how to put that, like the service charge is really meant to for, for the new customer to buy into the equity of the district, right, of the assets of the district?
Correct.
So, you know, the, the assets are long-term impact on the balance sheet, respectively, there's deferred write-offs, right, for the investment of the assets, but we recognizing that revenue immediately, isn't, isn't that like imbalanced?
So we actually have, sorry, for the entrance apps, is any new person coming to the ability app for the size of the entrance that they're getting. And on top of that, there's an SDC charge based on the meter size, that actually gets put into capital reserve accounts, two separate for each.
I just want to make sure we're not skewing this year, which is already a strong year in the first place, right?
And each intercept, there's also a work order for them to go out, create the card box and so forth, so.
Okay.
Expenses are also offsetting some of this revenue, and then some of it goes towards your system development trust.
Okay.
So, and I don't believe that I have to talk to Michelle again on that, because we've gone back and forth on the SDC charge, whether that goes in as revenue, or, I mean, it goes in as revenue, but we don't, it doesn't.
Go around the budget.
Exactly. It doesn't reflect that that's what we, part of the makeup of the, the revenues.
I guess, I guess, okay. So we're not recognizing the revenue right away. We are, we are not. Well, okay, I don't want to just, maybe something to look at, maybe, okay. Yeah. Well, just in general, I mean, this is a strong year, because we just have the, the, the rate increase, right? And, and in general, it looks like it's a, it's a, it's a pretty strong year for us as far as net result, right?
Yes.
But I now don't want to skew that any further, because as we all know, we can't bank revenue for next year in any shape or form, right? We have to, you know, the, the operating budget is, is a one-time, right? So I just want to make sure we're not artificially padding this year, when really we need that money possibly two years down the road, right? Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question too about the, when the column that says total of, percent of total budget.
Correct.
Did the budget include the rate increase that we implemented, whenever that was, and over, was it, or something like that? So I'd say a lot of these numbers, we're fifty percent through the year, we would expect to be about fifty percent of revenue and things like that, but we're, we're higher, we're at sixty percent and some eighty-eight percent, eighty-six, whatever that number is. I'm just wondering if the budget number that we're comparing to did include a, a rate increase, probably did.
I would think it, it would. So when we look at revenues, unless we, so like entrance fees and that kind of stuff, may not extension fees, anything there.
That come in like this.
They do, and they're, they're our best guess, so people are looking forward for the next year when we put the revenue piece together in the budget. So it's our best guess, so.
But we haven't decided on a rate increase when we created that budget, so I don't see how it can be part of the budget. Yeah, so the rate increase was months later. Again, maybe something to people for the next meeting to get back to us.
I know that.
Just of keeping going.
Whether it is this year or for twenty twenty four, um, for the budget for your revenue, I'm putting in a suggested what you guys should do to meet the expenses. So, and I think that's probably where we were last year. I think we had a, an estimated going into the budget.
Yeah, right. I was just curious if these numbers being over fifty percent, it really matches with what was budgeted or not, so that's fine.
And some of this does have to do with our growth too, that, you know, best guess, guestimates and in when communities would be finished. So things may have come online earlier than we thought, and now we're getting the water, the hydrants, the meters.
Right. Anybody else have any questions on any of this?
And then switching over to expenses. A few things to note is our sick payout, which we did at the end of December, due to, unfortunately, COVID going around a few times, we were able to save about ten thousand in what we thought we would end up paying out, where they ended up using their true sick time. So our estimates on make up, have gotten that payment was significantly less. Another thing to note on seven zero five five zero for R and M compensations, the sixty-six thousand there, which rose our budget for the year is due to the being struck twice for Wells four and five. I know that the insurance claim for one was denied. I'm not sure if the other one was, the wealth war.
But lightning?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
And have we discussed that with legal, why it was declined?
Right in the contract, because it's underground, they don't cover anything that's underground.
But we're paying a premium for it? If they don't cover anything on the ground, why we have, why do we have an insurance on? Oh, so we can't, okay. Thank you.
And then I had also, and I will keep showing them going forward, but you won't see any expenses or budgets in them. You'll notice seven zero five seven zero, some new accounts that we will be adding for the future budget. As we discuss, kind of, as we talk about restructuring, so that our N M treatment plant, now that we are, will be fully finished with them, we're going to have it kind of be all encompassing in one account, and then divided up between structure and equipment and so forth, could make it where we can look at one place to see how the treatment plans are doing versus five different accounts.
What was that number again?
One of them is seven zero five seven zero.
I don't see.
Seven zero.
The last seven zero five five zero, and then it goes to seven oh six hundred.
Okay. So, I'm not sure. Alright, moving forward.
Alright.
And we'll go over it when we do the budget on Tuesday, on our thinking on combining some of the things, but I would put them there.
Okay.
In terms of revenue expenses, we're doing well, we are in line with, and doing slightly better. Does anyone have any specific questions on accounts?
Anybody, no, I'm good too. Alright. Yes, in light of that, we could probably move on. Guess the next thing would be the sick time and pay time off?
So, here's a packet for that, that Michelle had done a survey of a bunch of communities on what their policies are for paying out sick and vacation at the end of unemployment. You know, fourteen municipalities responded. Four of them do basically exactly what we do here, which is hundred percent and not prorated at the end of employment. Two have hundred percent of vacation, and then very specifics of a sick out based on longevity and why they, they were let go. Five do hundred percent vacation. And then different variables of sick, and then others do hundred percent vacation and no sick pay at the end of employment. And I believe the discussion is whether you guys would like to start prorating, move to a percentage of sick, to a percentage of vacation, how you wanted to restructure possibly our policy on that.
So there's no cap on that at all? On any of that?
Regardless, uh, two hundred and forty hours per sick.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought I remembered.
So you can't, anything over and above that is paid out as part of your sick time payout at the end of the year? But how we do, so basically our.
So if you carry two hundred and, how many hours?
Two hundred and forty every year.
So if you're going to exceed that, then it's a mandatory payout at the end of
Correct.
that year, okay. So you can only carry that two forty?
Correct.
Whatever you said, okay.
And the way that we do our pay time is by calendar year, so everyone gets their time at the beginning of the year. New employees, we do prorate when they come on. But there's nothing in our guidelines to prorate when they leave.
So how long do they prorate after certain number of years, and then you go?
So there's, there's different things that different jobs are doing, and it's, it's more of a matter of who you want to stay with, how we're doing it. I mean, our turnover is low.
So is the, the sick, the accrued sick days, right, I'm sorry, not here, do you accumulate it sick, sick days over the years? Are they kicking in then first in terms of like disability, or is there also not, not disability?
Short-term disability.
Short-term disability, right? So is that sick pay then being used first to satisfy, satisfy that, right, to, to, okay, so?
Which is where they came up, and it's written in the handbook, two hundred and forty is, we allow you that amount of time as to truly use a short-term disability if you need it.
Right.
And then if you need longer, you can go on to short-term disability.
And there's no other short-term disability in place, or?
Which is not a short-term disability, but when it'll offset the sixty percent.
After you completed their forms, which involve doctors, and that you've maxed out your sick time available.
And which comes first? The sick time available comes first?
Sick time available.
That's being depleted?
Yes.
Then the short-term disability kicks in
Correct.
for another six weeks, or only the remaining part of the, whatever?
It kicks in for, it depends on the, the disability, on how long it will be for.
Well, most companies do six weeks, max, right? But the question is, if, if somebody had two hundred and forty days of paid sick leave, right? That's not far from the six weeks already. So is it in twelve weeks total of short-term disability?
Yes. So six week at a hundred percent because it's sick time, and then it would be the six weeks that. So.
So it's, it's accumulating both.
I mean, to my knowledge, no one has ever used it.
Yeah, so, right. And the, the short-term disability, is that self-financed, or is it actually a third-party insurance company? A lot of businesses just say, we're going to pay that out of our pocket.
That is a third-party.
It is a third-party insurance.
Our, our long-term disability and our unemployment.
I, I would recommend looking into that. Most businesses that I know pay the short-term disability out of their own pocket, because it's not happening all that much, and paying the premium all the time for it is just pure waste, really. So I would really recommend looking at that, if that's worth paying the premium for, especially if we have the short-term disability possibly covered by the paid sick leave anyway, to a certain point. I mean, twelve weeks, basically of, you know, whatever. That, that's very, very unusual, short-term disability, normally six weeks, right? I mean, my whole life had six weeks.
Wolf, but the insurance is only covering six.
Short-term disability is short money. It's not expensive. I have twenty-six weeks up from twelve, up from eleven last year. It's not uncommon, and it's not expensive.
Okay. Not, not my experience, but with a smaller business, maybe it is.
If you want to know just what the premium is for that particular, would it be good to know that, just?
You can have that information for, for a budget work session. Absolutely.
Yeah, maybe for the budget session would be good to know.
And again, that number we're comparing to would be the six weeks of sixty percent paid around our, yes, alright, instead of the tertiary company, right?
I guess I'm not too concerned about the accumulation in general and using it for sure. What I don't like is the payout at the end, because sick days aren't necessarily meant to be used, right? Unlike paid vacation days, right? Sick days are a contingency for when you're sick, they're not a guaranteed time off. So I have a little bit of an issue with that payout of, of sick days.
Are you talking at the end of employment, or every year?
No, well, well, really.
Yes, I'd be more, I mean, granted, I'm all in my theories, but I've never had a job where you get your sick pay, because it's not earned, really, at most jobs. Vacation, yes, I've never had a job where you're not paid.
And that's kind of the point of the fact that it's ambiguous the way the handbook is written, and it doesn't state whether you get prorated or not, and this is more of a, let's time to discuss to define it. And as I said, we prorate coming in as an employee, but we don't going out, and that's more of a, would you like to make the decision to going out?
Honestly, what I would love to see is staff making a recommendation. You guys know your market, you guys know what, what your staff thinks about that. I think you hear our concerns about it, and I don't necessarily think it's the right approach to have the board decide that for management, frankly. So why don't you look at your own concerns that you already brought forth, that there's ambiguity, and, and, you know, the fact that it's prorated when you go in, but not when you go out? Why don't you guys think about what you think is right, and what you think your staff would be willing to agree to and, and present that? Would you agree?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. They, I mean, they know the staff, we don't deal with the staff, so I agree.
Alright, so we can get some more information on that, and a budget session or something?
Yes, we can just look that up.
Alright. So it looks like the next item on the agenda.
Is June team.
Right.
So June nineteenth was declared a official holiday last year. Federal government is a working holiday. As you know, they put it in, but this year, it's now all non-essential federal buildings and offices will be closed the Monday, it actually falls on a Sunday this year. State of New Hampshire, all governmental buildings are open. However, the state does offer three floating holidays, in addition to the same other holidays that we do have, where we have one floating holiday. Which they obviously would agree an employee can use for, I'm sorry, in this holiday. Financial markets will be closed, banks are closed, and the post office is closed. And Merrimack School District, it wasn't admin holiday until the last three snow days, which none made students still in the building on the nineteenth, so I'm not sure what they plan on doing. Because right now, the last day of school is the nineteenth. And I know a few other school districts that, not to, they're actually moving that admin day to the following Monday, so that they're not losing a student day. So when I originally did this, the schools were closed, but the students wouldn't have been in the building.
Yeah. So on here, it says, talks about the state of New Hampshire, three floating holidays. Then it says, we have one floating holiday.
We have one floating holiday, correct.
Is that M V D you're talking about?
Yes.
So what, how does that, is that used just any, like a vacation day, or is it have to be on a holiday?
Right now, we.
Is it like the whole company decides, or?
No, right now, it's treated as an additional personal day. If, and it's assigned, if Christmas falls on either a Tuesday or a Thursday. And then that it will be assigned for everybody for that Monday or Friday.
So it also a fourth of July, what about the ends as well?
It is not just Christmas.
So it's not like an individual has it, can choose when to use it, like a vacation day, by less?
They can, if, if, like for this, this coming year.
Yeah.
Christmas is on a Monday.
Right, okay.
We write it when I send out the holidays for the year, I say you have three personal days, and here are the assigned holidays. Next year will be on a Tuesday. You have two personal days, and here are the assigned holidays.
So they'll be able to choose wherever floating day this year that they want to use it?
Correct.
So it doesn't have to be a whole company, the whole, the whole M V D doesn't have to, in this case, for this year, then?
It's your own personal, my company does.
Yeah, okay.
Two questions. How many holidays does the M V D have?
At least currently, we have nine or ten. Thanksgiving, whether it was.
Usually, are we, we're closed the day after Thanksgiving, you count that as one, two, Thursday, Friday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll put it this way, ten, ten holidays a year is, I believe, fairly common, right?
I have to count on my.
So that's, that's what I always had in, in my prior employers. The other question is, do we know what the cost of a holiday is? The actual cost of a holiday, because that's an interesting number to share.
Yeah.
Which is basically one day of wages, right, plus benefits and FICA and everything, right? So that would be an interesting question to ask, because that's, when we make a decision, we need to know the financial impact, right? So, I mean, actually, not that it really is there, because all we're doing is we're we're still paying it, but now it's not worked, right? So it's really perfect. So, but it would be nice to know that number, just for future reference, to know the cost of a holiday. But.
I mean, I personally would think this, just, I would, I would think that we might, if we're going to do this, we should probably give up another holiday. I, I don't know that we need another added date to this. And I, and I think substituting June nineteenth for a winter holiday would be advantageous for people to I'd rather have a stay off in the summer than the winter. So that would be sort of a, a perk in and of itself, but I don't know that we need to add a whole nother paid holiday on top of other benefits that already exist here. It's my own opinion on that, but I don't know, when, when do you need a decision on this? Or June nineteenth?
I mean, I've seen, I've seen, I've seen businesses add the holiday. I'm going to be transparent. I've, I've seen commercial businesses do it.
A lot of bargaining agreements that are coming up within this year, or at the end of this year, they are adding it to. So it won't be till twenty twenty-four, but they're adding it as part of their.
I mean, there's a few things we could do. We could either not give it, we could exchange one, like Don wants to do. We could just give them the day, or we could give them an extra floating day.
Well, or, actually, we could do that, and it can be two and a half, right? But the other option is basically to say, then, in those years where that Thursday is a holiday and Friday would be a nice day off, that Friday, then it's not a holiday, it's not a floating holiday, right? So we basically remove one floating holiday. You said it's nine or ten, is it always not? Are you using always the same number of holidays every year, or are you making it dependent on how the holidays fall in terms of?
Significant, there are set amount of dates, and then that extra whether one of your personal turn into the following is where Christmas falls.
But what I'm saying is, let's say, you have a year where Christmas falls on a Friday, and you have a year where it falls on a Thursday. In the year where it falls on a Friday, is that floating day that normally would then be used to fill that Friday in the one year, is that being then assigned also in the year where Friday is the holiday, or are, is that a?
It just goes to them to us as a personal day to use.
As a personal day.
That's what, not to jump on it, just to clarify, you treat floating days as just a personal, just because that's how my company does it. So it's technically, I mean, they call it a floating holiday, but I don't want to work tomorrow, and tomorrow's a holiday for me, I'm not going to go to work.
And M V D has the option reassigned, depending on what Christmas.
Okay.
If the memory serves right, I think that was, used to be Columbus Day. It used to get close, and that was switched to.
And that's where you got your floater.
I think that's where we got the floater, I thought I was going to go back.
Go away. Columbus Day gave a floating holiday, and that.
That's what we did years ago, better.
So.
So when you say you had, there are ten holidays, does that include the one floater, or nine? What, what, what do we have right now?
I can print it real quick, if you'd like, give me about two seconds. Yeah, the whole list of holidays. It's on my board. Already printed?
It kind of feels like a little.
Well, what it boils down to is something's got to give, right? You know, we, you know, we, we agree with this, then something else, but I mean.
Look at the whole picture.
As it is.
I, I don't have a problem with June nineteenth, I have a problem with paying out sick time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, right, right, same here.
We're gonna have that conversation.
Same, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and really, I think that's the men from, from, I think we agree, right, that's the message. Juneteenth is not the problem, that's, I think we would all be, John, please, please pitch in. But I, I, I think we feel Juneteenth is not the problem, I think we're really more concerned about like the payout of of unused sick days.
Yeah.
Now, as a, as a blank check, basically. Um, I think we rather want to see a change there. John?
Yeah, I think we got a nine forty stop time tonight, which I'm not likely to make, and I don't think that this is so urgent, we should be discussing it tonight.
Yeah.
Well, kick the can down the road then.
It's something we can talk about it, it's. At the budget.
I know what I was asking if, when you guys need a decision.
It no, uh, yeah.
I would say the same thing.
So there are ten official.
That includes the floater?
There are ten holidays. Three personal, one that can be assigned.
So that's in addition to sick and vacation days. Alright. So you really get fourteen holidays, if you want to look at it that way?
Differentiating pay codes, but give her, that's, that's excessive in my opinion.
That is, yeah, I'm, I'm used to ten period.
You call it floater, whatever you want, it's not a sick day, if it's not a holiday, I mean, uh. Vacation.
Day, right.
It's a holiday. So I'm, I'm, I'm definitely on the board of exchanging, just that's where I stand. But we're not gonna uh. Take any vote on this one.
Well, I think, I think we can do the same, the same thing as earlier, you guys know your staff, you guys know the market, you guys know the labor marketing better than this board does. I think you have heard our concerns across the board, I think you can take that into account and you can make a suggestion, right? I, you know, in, in all reality, it shouldn't be the board that is put into the position to, to be. You know, the bearer of bad news to, you know, that's, 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 that's an administrative and management. Responsibility just as much as the boards, so I think getting a proposal in one of the budget sessions is not a bad way to do this.
Yeah, and, and you know, they just brought it to us and saying, just add this to another holiday. Saying, well, think of something else, then I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. Uh, this moving along, monthly billing is next uh item.
Discuss this previously, but this will not be on official record. Uh, going to. We bill quarterly now. In three different. Cycles for the town, so the town is divided into three different areas. We bill each one quarterly. Moving to monthly billing. Will. Assist us considerably with our new billing cycle, I mean, our new billing system. Which is. Intended to be used for monthly billing. We have a couple of workarounds that we're doing for quarterly billing that. We can get rid of and use it truly. The way it was intended. Initially, a couple of the pros and cons. For the pros, going to monthly billing, when we do do rate changes, they're not a significant hit as it was before, a three month block of time. Um, which helps out a lot of our family members, particularly with going on with the economy right now. I'd rather have a five dollar increase than a fifteen dollar increase, depending on what it looks like. In terms of the con- cons, this costs. In the grand scheme of things, fifty four thousand six hundred seventy one dollars is what it would cost in addition to what we do now. Another fifty four thousand would, it would cost per year to go to monthly. Those numbers are built into the budget that we are, we have already discussed, the team, and we'll further discuss on Tuesday. With, as you had mentioned, with the possibility that you were gonna say yes to tonight's vote. We're already planning on going to that. One of the things that if you vote yes on this, one of your bylaws. One of your bylaws will just need to be changed from billing quarterly to billing monthly.
Yeah. Couple places in the packet here. So if I recall, a lot of this had to stem from um the challenges we had in. The tiered rates when we did a rate increase and everything and we got stuck, we couldn't make that software work for us. And, and I thought there was some discussion about talking to the software company and. Asking them if there's something they could modify, or what, what was the resolution of that? Did they ever say they couldn't do it, or what was?
They can modify if we are willing to pay for it, and there are significant. Changes, but they are wrote the software to be billed monthly. So.
And then you pay probably maintenance on the modification annually too, right?
So. They've been pushing for that for a while. Very much love to be, it's a little extra work for her, she's doing the whole time along with. Um. Our technician that does the reading, but in the end, she says it would be completely worth it.
And I know there's a lot of pros. It's, it's good, because I think if it levels things out. You know, there's more pros than cons here, obviously.
Also help out their schedule D E S, because they want to be there on a calendar year, so. We still got two more months and we have to wait for data and order report to them.
How much effort has been going into seeing if we can increase the, you know, the printing and postage costs and lockbox specifically, lockbox is. Still something.
Excuse me, lockbox for that cost, um, the twenty two thousand, you take into consideration the increase of our interest. Because it's through T V bank, the lockbox, they kind of offset each other, so although I have that here, because it's a true number. Our increase in interest will offset a lot of that cost for the lockbox.
Increasing.
End result, all of our fees, which now will include the lockbox, is then calculated to our, our earnings. Our end of the month earnings, which is. Our interest off.
So you're saying that the fifty four thousand extra cost may be lower because we have savings on the interest and.
Correct.
So that's not the interest just with bill pay, though, you're talking about the interest in our overall.
Overall, TV back, because lockbox will be through TV back.
Yeah. I mean, that's interest that could be applied to anything else that we. Expenses, right? Yeah, I mean, it's just, I don't know, it's unfortunate that I, it's this number fifty four thousand dollars a year of extra cost. You know, rather put that towards media change outs or something like that, but. Um, I do like this idea on um. You know, on the pro, one of the pros is it gives us more opportunity to engage and educate customers. I would like to see that actually happen and not just be a talking point here that gets kind of missed.
Actually be communicating with all of the monthly. That coming up with more marketing programs to stuff in with the envelopes along with. Uh, the fact that. Um, if we had looked on the following page for cost to go monthly. As of January eighteenth, we have four hundred forty seven that are e-bill only. And that is increasing every month, so back to the original lockbox, that's. A cost that will eventually go away. Because we're getting to the point that so many customers are on a portal that we can then handle the checks here.
And I know it has been said before that we can't. Penalize customers that don't sign up for these services, right? I would like to have that revisited, because everybody else is doing it. And I know we're, we're a little bit of a different animal being a village district, but I would like to really.
Like you that. Almost like charge an administrative fee if you have to send out a paper.
Yeah, yeah, everybody else does it.
If you sign up for e-billing, is there any fee for paying online?
Probably is.
There is if you create my credit card.
Yes.
If you. To it and have it automatically come out.
Okay.
Then there is no fee.
But you would have to have it automatically come out, what if I just attach my account, I just want to pay up on my own, so you.
But again. If you're coming out monthly at fifty five dollars.
Yeah.
Instead of a hundred, I know as a budgeting person.
Yeah.
I'd prefer that much better.
Not to um. I mean, not to sound crude, or however you want to take it, but what is the loss of uh? Fees, like late fees, because I know I can sit, when I was on M V D, I paid a late fee every single bill. Because it's quarterly, nothing is quarterly, because it's not nineteen debt. And you would lose almost a huge percentage of that, do we have any kind of numbers as to what that is?
I don't even know how to be.
Hey, that's what I would, that's what I thought, that's fine, just to keep in mind, that's obviously, you're losing money, obviously.
But.
So, but what I'm hearing.
Gonna have the income on hand.
Exactly, instead of waiting for it later.
Extra.
Correct.
To get it two months later.
Right.
So I'd rather have the cash on hand.
Okay, I'll make a motion. To move. The billing.
I would second that motion.
The, in the. You know. Assumption that the additional cost annually is probably less than the fifty four thousand six hundred seventy one dollars. Right?
With the offset of.
And, and frankly, I think I would like to hear a little bit more of detail on that.
Okay.
As we can, you know, estimate some of that as far as interest and um. But. I would like, I would make that motion.
And I'm gonna second that, but I'd like clarification, these, just because you have it, will be lowered with e-bill and auto pay, were these numbers calculated with um? Our e-bill not changing at all, because then you have. The numbers on how many people are on e-bill on the next page, or were those the numbers calculated, used for these calculations?
Or I had updated the bottom part.
Yeah.
For customer on the eighteen.
Okay, so that, that's what is being reflected in these uh annual increases that.
And that um, when you, when people do automatic uh payments. Are they getting anything that? Uh, they're seeing anything about this opportunity to engage and educate customers, are they seeing anything?
And that's where we can.
Cause if it's just money coming out of their bank account, they don't even see.
They get an email statement, which is attached and looks just like what they get for a paper, so it's in the same respects that we can add to that and educate.
They would still be getting communications.
Alright, that's what I was asking.
As long as they don't send it to spam. They would.
Yeah, right.
I will say this. As far as that motion goes, I will say, I would like to see that we have an action item that we get a little bit more granular. Um, projection of what impact the savings and interest has, right? But I would also like to see that we have an action item that we talk to legal, what, what? Options we have to skew, you know, the tip to scale a little bit, either by adding additional fees to those that continue to do. Um.
Paper.
Right. Or by giving benefits to those that don't. Right.
And some people are not gonna wanna, I know my parents, I try to tell my mother, you gotta, she still drops it off at the door, it's like.
And that's okay.
Not nineteen ninety three, Ma, you gotta.
And that's perfectly fine, but you shouldn't penalize the district as a whole. You know, to, to, to enable that to continue, right? Not in the light of fifty four thousand dollars here.
Wolf, do you mind repeating the first action item you wanted to add?
Yeah, to um basically get a little bit more granular breakdown of the actual projected additional cost. Um, that doesn't only include the extra cost, but also includes some of the savings.
T V banks, yes.
And we can have changing numbers to see as we go along, how many people are actually signing up for e-bill.
Right.
Just kind of live.
And I should probably see where that money's coming from, right out of the operating budget. That would have to come out of the operating budget.
Correct.
So the question is, we probably need to add actually date then to the motion, right?
As to when we will.
As to when we were switching.
Our best estimate, because we are staying, changing over our meter reading software. So we're giving ourselves January, February and March for to make sure all that is done, complete and works. To Amy's best guess is able first to do, to change over.
That's what her target is, or that's the earliest she can do it?
That's her best guess.
Gotcha, okay.
Caveat.
Who would have to be after the annual meeting?
Yes.
Right, right. Do the plan, the, the changeover. This, the months to get ready for it after it. What, I guess we do for.
We can start planning and because we've heard the two of us have already started, we'll say what, what needs to change from here, what needs to change from here. As I said with. Um, the new leader reading software that. She wants to get that. And she only thinks that may take February, but she's giving herself March. Cause that's the way things go.
Alright, so motion made second uh by Wolf, second by Paul.
Correct.
Any other? Last words of wisdom before. Alright.
John, I think it's.
All those, John, you have anything to add, or you just want to vote?
I'm getting ready to say aye.
Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, I will vote um. And negative on that one. Uh, and John. Uh, for the, for the record, you voted in favor. Okay. So it's three in favor, one opposition, no abstentions. And Dawn prevention, myself was the one in opposition. Okay. So, we're good with uh, I think we're good with, with you on this then, right, Kristen? Good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, so uh, first thing on the regular session. Um. We have a uh Board of Commissioners to receive an update from Jamie Emery of Emery and Garrett, G Z A. That's on the uh salt reduction efforts. I believe you have some in, some updates for us, right, Jamie, on a uh, a grant?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, if I can share my screen real quick. Is that possible?
Yeah.
Can you make it so I can share?
You're outside, Jamie.
Outside?
Yep.
Okay, there you go. Okay. So uh. Couple of things, this should be a very short session from my end, but uh. First things first, I wanted to congratulate you guys, uh, the grant that we are currently working on. Is one that included putting up signs, can you see my uh picture that Jill sent to me?
Yep.
That shows that the signs are going up and it appears that we've got about thirty of them in, now we've got about a few more to go, but there was some equipment breakdowns that. Uh, had prevented us from getting the rest in, but uh, we're making great progress on this and, and clearly. You know, this is all part of this grant application that we did through the Source Water Protection Program, which uh. I think has been a pretty good success and we're gonna continue to, to move forward, so I just wanted to. Give the commissioners a little bit of a positive feedback here that, that, that we're making, you know, the. Everybody's making some progress and at least getting the education out, that's one step. Um, I did want to talk to you a little bit about my conversation with Fidelity. Dawn and I had a conversation a little while ago, and I've been trying to get a hold of um. Fidelity and they finally did get back to me today, so that was good. Uh, and I wanted to fill you in, so far, uh, some really good news, uh, they set up their own weather station. To use for their onsite salting events, which uh is geared towards trying to use less salt. Uh, they're testing the effectiveness of using calcium, magnesium in several parking areas, walkways, um, as an alternative assault and brine. Uh, they've developed heated entries to both buildings which are fully operational right now, both at the two contra way and the one Spartan way. Which are, you know, something we discussed before, they had some problems with delivery of equipment, but they have finally got the uh heated entries uh operation. Um, all snow applicators are Snow Pro certified. They are monitoring all their ice melt applications, and what I mean that um. One of the things that's really encouraging to me is at least um, Ken said they have converted uh to using brine for all their parking lots. Now, I think this is one thing that we've been, you know, working hard to get there, they've made this. Determination that they were gonna go that direction and Ken said that's what they're doing, now I think we need to do some spot checks. Uh, personally, to just go up there in the next couple of weeks during storms and. Uh personally to just go up there in the next couple of weeks during storms and and confirm that the brine is actually being used in all the parking lots, but this is a big. This could be a game changer for us in terms of uh helping move in the right direction. They've taken twenty percent of their parking lots out of service for the time being. This is part in response to the moat working. Program, they're not sure how long they'll be able to hold that. Uh they are providing us, will will provide us with a total number of pounds of salt used in the year and for the brine, what I mean salt meaning. Conversion of salt from the brine that they use. So we will have some kind of mass balance uh number that we can use for that particular. Um facility, which is a key facility, as you all know. And they do still have and retain the no salt goal in the next three or four years. Though he did admit this is a broad sustainability goal that isn't written in stone. Um but I thought it was very encouraging. I wanted you to all be aware of that. Uh because I think at the end of the day, this is what we're all trying to work towards for everybody who's in the uh the wellhead protection areas for wells three and two. Um and nine, so uh particularly in those areas. The other piece of good news uh that I'll share with you is that um we have. Uh received. Um the a a grant. Um I got noticed this last week that uh the application we put into the source water protection grant. Uh for this next year has been approved. It's a forty, it's a twenty five thousand dollar grant. You have to put twenty thousand dollars in as a matching portion in your budget uh starting, I believe, in July. And it incorporates essentially uh installing conductivity meters in all your production wells so that we can get some kind of um. This is this is kind of the work scope here. We can get an idea of the to continuously monitor connectivity of the water being pumped. Um it'll give us some information on how, you know, salt is moving through the aquifer at various times of the year by salt load, by storm, by winter severity. Um and those are kind of a good thing in terms of us getting a better handle as to the impacts. Um of where we're getting the salt. We're gonna take sodium chloride sampling at all. If you recall, we did the two thousand and twelve. Source water um management program uh before and. We're gonna take the samples in all the same locations, sodium chloride um. Let me just pull that up real quick if I can show you kind of the table that goes with this, but this is the two thousand and twelve table. Blow this up, but there's about twenty. Uh or twenty five sampling locations that when you look at the areas. I may run out of storage here, sorry, I did. I blew that up. For instance, some of these would be, these are, if you look to the right here, some of the sampling ports that we measured in two thousand and twelve or in the well four or five area. Uh we're gonna be doing some inside and outside of these areas plus a few more, so it's kind of to duplicate what we did in two thousand and twelve and get a check. Twelve years later, eleven years later, as to where we stand. Now we're making, now how much progress are we making? So. Think that's gonna be encouraging and and I'm happy that the state is is on board with that. I think the only thing that I wanted to add um from this is that. Here. The uh. We're gonna be looking at the storm. If you remember the stormwater uh pond near well four and five, we're gonna go down and take a hard look at how do we reengineer or. Re divert the surface water that's draining all the salt from the parking lots down into four and five, and how do we get that out of there? So part of this grant is to take a an active look at that particular stormwater. We're gonna look at all of them. Or most of them in the in the in the source water protection areas, but that one is gonna be focused on to see if we can come up with a new plan to get. Get get the surface water out of um that particular uh area that's contributing s- sodium chloride to four and five. And then that then there'll be a report and some presentations uh to the state on this matter, so. Good news is that, I mean, they didn't, they didn't award source water protection grants to everybody. Um they had limited number. But um Meramec, I think partly because of the amount of activity we've had with D E S on this issue and how much we integrated them and how much we've incorporated. Their input into our program. Uh we continue to provide some reasonable funding for can, you know, to move this. Dial forward. So that's that's essentially all I have tonight um. In a kind of a quick manner, but good news uh on, I think on all fronts, so.
You're gonna put a scope of work in front of us? I I don't think we have, we don't have that from you yet, right? You're gonna put in a proof, a scope of work in front of us to approve?
Yeah.
To execute that. All the tasks.
Yeah, that all we've gotten so far is the notice that they've been awarded. It's gonna, we're, we've gotta get it before the governor's council to get approved. But I'll work on getting a contract to you for signature.
Good.
Yep.
How how frequent are the sampling um? Is it quarterly or?
We're gonna do three, three, three sampling rounds in the year.
Okay.
A full, full three, three rounds.
Is there a certain season you want to capture in there?
Yeah, so we we're hoping, you know, I would love to get the spring. Uh winter and fall, you know, that would be the. The right hope um spring, winter, fall, but it kind of depends on how we get this money allocated and uh if we get a signed agreement, I mean, in part. I don't have a problem in starting it early, you know. So if we, if the if governor's council gets delayed and we have a fairly good sense that it's gonna happen, then we might just take the risk and take the portion, although. Uh I don't think your funding is available until July on your end, on your match piece. Uh I'm not sure how that would work. We'd have to figure out how to do if we were to say, do it right off in um. Uh start, let's say in March. Um we'd have to figure out a different funding that, you know, how do we deal with it?
Right, that's why I was asking. I didn't know if there was a time limit on the availability of the money and if it's not spent. Within a certain year.
We have fourteen months, yeah, we have fourteen months, so whatever, whenever it's signed, we have fourteen months from that point, so we can fit three seasonal. Full seasonal um sampling rounds in.
Okay. All right.
So that'll be the next step for me to get to you. Um not a big rush on it. Um the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that there's going to be at some point, I need to get. To you a proposal for the monitoring requirements of the large ground withdrawal permit. Um that will be an annual. What we did for this first one is we uh took. Uh we were able to cover that um as part of our large groundwater draw permitting program that we did and covered. The first round of the sampling into that.
You're talking about well nine, right?
Correct, nine, yeah, but for the next year, uh we'll need to do, um you know, there'll be another. Large ground with draw monitoring program that has to be. Taken in, you that you'll have to fund. It won't be super substantial, but it'll be something you have to put in like you would do for Mitchell Woods. Like we do for others, uh large ground draws.
Right.
Then I guess the last thing that's hanging out there is whether or not you want us to put in a proposal. For the artificial recharge which we discussed in November. And you are gonna be thinking about it and we don't have to answer that question tonight, but. I know that Keith has a preliminary engineering design in his, I think he submitted a scope for that. We have not submitted a scope of files, you know, a scope for the pilot test. And that's gonna be a big number, so you know, it's gonna be in the two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar range, so. That's something that you're not gonna do, you know, without. That you may want to wait till till um. I I'm not exactly sure how you want to do this. I'm not sure when Keith would be doing his preliminary engineering design. That.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a big number to factor into a budget at this.
No, yeah, right, yeah. But that's kind of in, it's been in our budget, you know, in the in those numbers for quite a while.
What does entail to put that? That's such a large number. What is the um? Where's all this cost?
So one of the things we're trying to figure out is to get the water in from the Meramec, right? We've gotta put in, we gotta build the basins temporarily, but to build the temporary basins, we've gotta bring the water in. Gotta put in the uh, we'll use some of the monitoring wells that are there, but there's gonna have to be some monitoring wells installed. Then we've gotta. You know, pump the water into the basins, do uh analysis in terms of what does it do for the nitrate, you know, the not nitrate, but the. Uh meteorologicals and all the organic, the total organic compounds and so forth. And then, once we determine that it's actually effective, um then we'll be doing a model, uh you know, computer models to to model. The effect of the long term effectiveness of the data that we collect in the short term pilot test. Then w- once that's done, then we'll move, you know. Then then we would present a report, we'd submit it to the state, the state would would evaluate whether or not they concur with our. Assessments of how much water, additional water we're gonna gain, you know, by doing the A R, what's the water quantity gonna be, etcetera, etcetera.
So I I know I've seen a presentation by um. Your former colleague, Peter Garrett, when this first came about, aquifer recharge. And the way he described it was using um like columns, test columns, instead of actually doing an onsite loading. Uh so you kind of, you take the soil from the ground and you build it in the column and you feed the water from the top. And measure sample what's coming out the bottom. Is that, is that a an option in lieu of what you're talking about?
It is, and and we did that in Newmarket, um for the town of Newmarket, we did the column testing. Uh which which. We never ended up building that a- artificial recharge. The ones that we have built have been based on. Actual taking of the actual surface water, but it's definitely doable. And there's some savings that could be accomplished, could be achieved. And we could, we could walk through that. I mean, I. I gave a rough number, I think it was three hundred thousand dollars originally for doing the kind of, you you know, we might bring it down to two hundred and twenty five or something to that. And it's not gonna be, still gonna be some money, amount of money. There's a lot of, it's a lot of information we have to come to terms with to make this, to be sure that. You know, it's gonna work, but not the the downside about using columns, we don't see how effective the recharge bases work, so we'd have to actually take. Water from the system and pump them into the basins and make sure they're accepting the water as we think they should. Right, because that, if the if the basins don't accept the water at the rate we need it to be accepted, then we can't calculate how much. Additional water we can withdraw.
Yeah.
Um but I will say that the system, you know, and I showed in November a video of how the A R works that we put together. And I don't know if you remember that at at our meeting, but then also some some write ups that have been in the state about. The artificial recharge systems we put in. Um it's it, and I think what. What, you know, talking to Underwood, they believe that the artificial recharge is your next, you know, between Mitchell Woods and A R, that's your next. Best options. For a long term additional supply.
So that's.
It's it's definitely out of the box.
Right. Uh but that cost number you was just saying, that includes the um groundwater modeling as well to find out. You know, the mound that that develops and that type of thing, is that, is that inclusive of everything, or is there?
Yeah, that would be, we would include that groundwater modeling. We take the data from the pilot test and do some modeling on it.
Okay. All right.
That's gonna take some like, it'll take some time for me to put that proposal together, so. Uh you know, if you want me to do that, I probably need sixty days to to pull it all together.
Okay.
So we do, that that would certainly qualify for the system development charge capital reserve fund. We do have over a billion dollars in that account. Cover.
Oh, yeah. Oh. That's good. I was trying to figure out how to put it in a budget and that, we're, you know, that was a tough sell on that.
I mean, I know we're looking at that account for some other stuff that.
Right.
But I think.
All right, it's good to know.
Going out, but we do have money in that.
So then we don't necessarily need to work it into the budget. The timing on his part is not as critical to get it in a budget then. If it's coming out of capital reserve.
It would come out, I may want to put it in the budget line. Just unfunded and then. Then it's coming from capital.
Okay, I see what you mean, yeah, it's offset.
But yes. Budget, but.
All right. Anybody have any questions other than that on uh anything?
I guess my comment is only. And maybe I'm not quite up to speed because I missed some 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 meetings here lately, um but um. I think to spend a quarter million dollar, we need to first decide, are we really after A R or not, right? And I'm not sure if I've seen that discussion. Really as hard as I want it to be.
Yeah.
Or as as committed as I want it to be, right? So.
Yeah.
I think that's the first discussion we need to have, and I think that's a discussion that's. Either requiring a separate meeting or or work session, we can bake that into a an agenda like tonight's.
We did actually go over it in detail at the December meeting, I believe, Keith presented, um is it November?
Yeah.
He did present um.
Actually, I was.
The addendum. You weren't there, I know, because I I remember saying it was unfortunate. Weren't there to see the artificial.
I didn't want that, I think, yeah.
The the numbers and he had prepared an additional table and everything and. Um the benefit of A R is it's very low and it O N M. Even though the initial cost is a little bit high.
Yes.
When you're left with just the recurring O N M, it's the lowest, one of the lowest O N M. So that's beneficial for that. We did believe it's gonna um help to reduce the P fast loading.
Right.
It's gonna dilute the aquifer, so it could prolong the life of the media change outs. Um but I think as a board, we did. Um agree that if you do want to proceed, so I think what in in proceeding with it. The next thing that um I think Keith was gonna do, as Jamie was describing, is put together a scope of work. To evaluate. What the preliminary costs would be. And then, once we get those costs, I think that you could probably. Turn Jamie loose on his or not, depending on what what the cost come in as, you know.
Well, to, I mean, having heard that. The construction period is coming up pretty fast, right? This the construction season is coming up pretty fast.
Yeah, this wouldn't be this years.
No, 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 but the 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 sampling and testing, we would not try to get that maybe.
Yeah, we wouldn't need to be in a construction period. Um that can be done. I just don't want to do it in the dead of winter.
Um, yeah.
But uh, no, we could do it in three of the seasons for sure.
But you said you need sixty days, sixty days is two months, right? So.
Well, no, sixty, I I I was asking for two uh for sixty days to put the work scope together, so I get it to you, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so if we don't ask you to do that tonight, that means it's gonna be three months from now, not two months from now, until we even have to quote in front of us.
So I guess the question is, do we want to have Jamie go ahead and put the scope together? I I guess I'd say yes, I mean. At the last meeting or November meeting, we were pretty much all on board with proceeding with this.
Well, the minutes are in your packet too.
Yeah.
Yes, and I'm gonna abstain from that. Decision, right, because I'm not really informed enough, but um it might be worthwhile to to ask you to to get started with that.
I I I would be in favor of it, because I I think we're we're already kind of. Agreed, we want to go down that road.
I agree.
Um. So if you're willing to put a scope of work together in sixty days for us. I think we are, we'd be interested in in looking at it for sure.
Okay, I'll do it. Yeah, and and Wolf, I think probably a good idea is to talk with um Keith, because I know Keith has. Spent a lot of time, uh I believe, on that kind of assessment analysis of what is the, what are the options that you have and um. Uh I know, I I didn't hear his whole um discussion either, but I do believe that he's kind of laid that out pretty carefully.
Right, it was it was pretty in depth as well.
Yeah.
All the way down to how much per gallon each.
Right.
Each one.
Right, you had all those charts up. Certainly get that to you, okay?
And then Dawn, as a side note is, uh you know, I'm working on that proposal for the, you know, our side of it for the A R. You know, for the pump station, the intake, and so we're looking at that thirty percent design for that Mitchell Woods. So I'm hoping to have that off to you next week.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Oh, go ahead. You had something, Jamie?
No, no, uh I'll just, I'm I'm putting that down for me to get it to you in the in the next sixty days.
Uh Jamie, I have one question on your stuff, is how were you planning on crossing the railroad with your temporary line?
That's, that's a twenty four thousand dollar question. We haven't figured that out.
Okay.
Um you know, that's that's a, that's, I'm not even sure that that can happen, so we may end up having to go to a different uh setup. The and that's why I need more, that's why I need some time, because if the railroad says there's no way that we can run any kind of a temporary line. Over that. For any kind of period of time, then.
For the tests he's talking about.
Yeah, yeah, for the testing.
Yeah.
So we did figure, I mean, that's the shortest. It it's only thirteen hundred feet, I think. I, you know, I have twenty five hundred feet of of height that I use for just pumping tests, so I have plenty of. Line to use, just a matter of whether the the railroad, whether. Line to use, just a matter of whether the, the railroad, whether.
There's no culvert, there's no drainage culverts on crossing those tracks anywhere?
There's only one that's further up to the north, unfortunately.
By Parker Village is one, Jeff, I was just mentioning Jeff Martin, I walked that whole area, um. Just a couple of years ago, and Parker Village is a, is a culvert rated that area.
How long, how much longer that would be to get over to our site, but. Might be the only, I can't see the railroad allowing us to put any obstructions over them. I just don't see that happening, and I don't think we want to do directional bore right now. I don't know.
It, it, it kind, it, it, it is something that is. It just has to be, we, we have to either eliminate it as an option or not, and that's just, it's, it's going to require some contact time with those guys.
But Peter, you're only really concerned with the full uh permanent future construction, right?
Yeah, that's what we were looking at, then, you know, that, that one, one of my questions with, with Jamie was, it's like, you know, I, 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 I agree with you, I don't think. That, that uh railroad is going to allow you to run a temporary line across those tracks.
Right, you know.
Um, I just don't think they will, so um, yeah, then the other option, you know, you add to one option is going through the culvert. The other option is, yeah, to put a, a sleeve underneath the railroad now. You know, to run a temporary line through, then, you know, you would use that for the future, but, you know, that's a lot, uh, you know, just, uh. You know, a lot of expenses, uh, it is, it is, but if we do do that, then we just want to make sure that we coordinate on the size of that. So that sleeve can be used in the future, or, you know, for our pipe.
I'll probably call you, because I had Mike, I had Mike Metcalf gave me some prices a long time ago on directional drilling underneath that line, so. If we go that route, I'll give you a call, and we can at least incorporate that into the proposal as an option.
Yeah, I just did a project over in Jaffa where we're using directional drilling, so I have some recent numbers. You know, actually, we have some other stuff in Epping that we, that they're just put in some directional drill there too, so I have, I have some numbers I can give you.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
All right, well, uh, I look forward to, I think that's a good decision in terms of at least getting it on the table for the next step. And that kind of follows suit with what the last conversations we've had over the last year or so, so.
Uh, Jamie, before you leave, I was just wondering, um, has anyone had any conversations with uh anyone at the town, Lori or Kyle? I don't know if Kyle is still, he's gone already. Um, about, they were, they were contemplating, when we had our meeting with the town, Paul McCallie and everybody, they were talking about, um. Maybe doing some trials with Brian and all that type of thing, I know they're going through some turmoil with um staff, so. I don't know if they, I, I'm just wondering, does anybody know if they've done anything?
So I've talked to Lori, um, they quite, Lori and Sean were supposed to get together, they haven't. But um, to, to sync, um. She did uh indicate to me that they have in their budget for next year at Brian Baker.
Okay.
So they are, it's still kind of progressing, um.
And that kind of leads into what I was going to ask as well, is at that meeting, we committed that if, if there's some kind of funding. Systems that they're looking for, something, you know, nominal, not extravagant, because it's in M B D's interest. You know, we did indicate that we might be willing to uh provide some level of funding for something. And I'm just asking that because it's budget time, so I don't know if, you know, although the number thinking about is probably something that can be. Found in the budget somewhere, even if we don't allocate specifically for it, but I didn't know if there was something they were looking at that they said. Oh yeah, we want to buy this, and if you guys want to contribute five grand or something, just keep that in mind, you know.
Yeah.
I assume you probably hadn't had a chance to speak with anybody, Jamie, at the town since our.
Well, I, I call, it's interesting, because I talked to Sean a couple of times, and I checked in with him to say, how are you coming with your conversations with. Particularly with, with Public Works, and he said, I've left messages, I've tried to reach him. Um, he hadn't had much success with them. Uh, yeah, did, did I hear you, is, is Kyle still there?
No, he's gone, right, he gave his notice, he's left now. Even, is the. Is Dawn too gone?
On us left and Serena is both.
Serena?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, I didn't know that. So, yeah.
That may be, what, that may be one of the reasons that there was no responses.
They got to hire the person to respond. All right, well, answers that question.
There you go.
Um, and then just before you leave, I was kind of just thinking, um, and I don't want to get into it now, because we're running a little behind here, but. Um. I, I think at a couple of months ago, there was a discussion that maybe, um, you, Jamie, would work. With um Jill to get a list of, um, I know we already have a list of commercial properties in our wellhead protection areas. I was just wondering if we could take that a little further and maybe have, you know, who the contact people are. I know we sent out letters twice, right, in the last couple, three years. I'm wondering, um, if we can. Get more formal or informal, I guess I should say. With emails to people, you know, because we don't really know if these letters went to the right people.
Yeah.
It, it could have went to just like, you know, someone who didn't pass it to the correct person. Really want to get to the one that's making the decisions on applying the salt, and the, and these are in grandfathered sites as well as. Non-grandfathered sites, the grandfathered sites, we'd be asking for their cooperation.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking, there's like a whole multitude of, um, I want to bring this to the next level. Like, I know, in the, in the summer, I mean, the staff goes out and does irrigation policing. In the winter, I kind of see it flipping over as maybe doing some salt drive-bys.
I, I think that's absolutely necessary, I, I mean, I, I totally concur, because I, I really. Really believe that we, we have no, we have to keep moving forward, and um. I want, in order for the monitoring to be effective in what we're doing, we've got to be in a position where. Uh. We are actually demonstrating that things are changing, and so I think that doing an inspection on these park, parking lots. Um, you know, even though it's maybe not an official one, is a real, is a real something that we should be doing, so. Uh, I think, let, let Jill and I work out if it's all right with Jill.
And the reason. The reason I was bringing you into this is because, you know, if it's, there's a lot of work to be done, and I'm wondering if some of that can be done. By Emery and Garrett, instead of overburdening the staff with a lot of these details, I, I'm not trying to put this whole extra amount of work. On, on you guys.
We need to generate a list regardless, because we have the B M Ps and everything else. Maybe go through and make sure that the names of the names.
Yeah, just kind of updating a database, you know, getting more detail on who the owner is, who's the applicator of the salt.
To follow up, the, the one that was, that you had mentioned at a previous meeting that was.
Uncontinental.
Heavily salting, I was able to contact them.
You did?
We sent the letter out, um, it took a little bit of work, we, we tracked down a name and, and uh.
See, that's exactly what I'm talking about, you know, just maybe doing that to more properties, that, that's great, I, I had no idea. And I will commend, uh, there was a, there was a lot of good Facebook posts on our, um, aquifer protection signs. The community was asking what those are all about, the answers went up right away. So that's, that's awesome, it's, it's, that's commendable, thanks.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I like this, I like this concept, and I think, you know, between Ron and I and Jill, we can come up with some kind of a. Uh, inspection process, um, and I think we can, we can do it under some of our existing contracts, I think. So I don't, and I don't think it's a heavy lift either, I think it's just.
Okay.
Trying to take it to the next level, so I concur with that, because otherwise, we're, you know. We do have a small hammer, but the hammer, it's kind of like hitting a sixteen penny nail in the, in the wood, with a small hammer, it just takes a lot of hits.
Right.
And ultimately, we'll get that sixteen penny nail into the wood, and.
So as I, what I look at this is collecting data over the next year or two. And if we need to present uh an argument to the town council who can establish a salt bylaw. Because I think it's, it's only the town council that can implement that, M B D can't. With, the first question they're going to ask is, what have we already tried to have these properties do as a voluntary measure? So if we can document these things that we've tried and the communications we've made, and then your sampling of the aquifer is going to tell us. If the salt loading is improving or not, you know, these are all the pieces of the, the, the puzzle that we need to potentially put together. In order to justify if we do need a salt bylaw, so. Um, that, I don't know where I think it's going to go.
I think that's really good, and I think Fidelity making kind of the lead, being the leader in the, in the industry to try to. To, you know, they've listened to us, they've heard us, they're making actions, they're doing stuff to help us, you know, hopefully, you know. People like Sean have already picked up on that, and we can just carry that good news to, to other parking areas, so. Uh, I think we can work something out, maybe in the next week or so, Jill and I can, can kind of, or Jill and Jeff Ron, I can get on the horn and just figure that out. And it might just be, I might just send someone down there to go to every parking lot. Um, and then after the next storm, so.
All right, great, any other questions for Jamie before he heads out? Um. All right.
All right.
Thanks a lot, guys, have a good evening.
Thank you, Jamie.
See you, bye.
Bye.
All right, next we have uh board commissioners up to receive an update from Underwood Engineers for our ongoing various projects, we get uh. Peter Pitts is on the line from Underwood. Go ahead, Peter, you have the floor.
Okay, so, um, so on the, uh, I'll just go in order of what you have, the well two nine project. Um, G A C is uh scheduled to be delivered on Thursday of this week. Um, they believe it, you know, they're, they're trying, going to try to shoot it in in one day, but the truck driver that we saw at well four, he said, oh, that's a two-day job. So, hopefully that, that's going in, you know, so Thursday, Friday, say that, that's going in. Uh, let it wet out during uh the weekend, because you want, you need a twenty-four hour wet out period. So we'll have, you know, pretty much a three-day wet out period on that, so then we'll uh flush them on Monday. Uh, you know, backwash, you get rid of all the fines, uh, then do some forward flow on that. Um, take a uh P fast sample and send that off. So, um, so we'll be needing to do that, so if you say we're going to be taking the P fast sample, say on Tuesday the seventh. It's been taken three weeks to come back, you know, that puts you at the twenty-eight that we're getting results. And then, you know, just coordination to getting the plant online, so hopefully, you know, the, that first week of March, you know. Will be going online, so.
Okay. So I have a question on, go ahead, John.
So just real quick, um, so I deal with Alpha as well in my lab, and I had a conversation with my account man. Manager, which I think is you, Steve Knollmeyer, he did tell me that rush delivery uh is available. At this time on the P fast samples for a price, so if we think it's worth it, might consider going that route.
Right, yeah, we were, so, uh, Jill, were you getting, um, some different uh? Answers on that, or, or was, you know, you were paying for rush, but it really, they weren't able to rush it?
We're in a rush?
Yeah, the rush would be the regular turnaround time, and their normal turnaround time is twelve to fourteen days. Um, but uh they're. They're backed up now, so it was three to four weeks, and they said, um, the rush would be their normal turnaround time.
Yeah, he told me five-day rush is now available, I think December they got slammed.
What did you talk to?
This morning.
Okay, so I talked to, um, Mike Chang last week.
Send them to me, I'll give them in five days.
So, so the only thing on that is, we're still doing some uh, uh startup or, um. You know, of the skater system, they also still need to do some training of, you know. Um, you know, the operators on some of the pieces of equipment, so there's going to be some stuff, you know, that they were going to be doing within that. That period to be ready to start up, so. Yeah, I'm not, you know, if we can get results in three weeks, I think that that would probably be. You know, good, at least in terms of a contractor doing some stuff, you know, maybe be able to gain a week, you know, but you're paying for the, the testing for that.
We're talking like multiple samples here, or it's not just like one or two samples, right?
Yeah, we're going to be uh sample in every vessel, so.
Is it, are we, um, in a rush to get this online, I mean, you're saying maybe March?
No, yeah, no, I don't, you know, I, I at least, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if we put it on in March, you guys, that's pretty good for you guys, right?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we probably don't really need it till May. Um, I don't want to tell you that.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
It'll be July, and then, you know.
Because I'd like to be able to shut seven and eight down for a period in.
Probably going to be changing that out.
Is that pressure that is worked out over there?
It's true.
I, I just said I'd mention it in case it's helpful, but it sounds like you're upset.
Um, on that note, on the carbon that we got at, well, Wells four and five was the regenerated one, right? But this is virgin carbon at Wells two and nine. How do we know we're not going to get a load of iron like we did at well seven and eight?
Well, so we're, we don't know that for a fact, and what, but what we're asking is, for each truckload that's coming, we're asking for a five-gallon pail of it. You know, so.
Yeah, okay.
So, okay, so we have that, you know, because before, you know, Voca also takes their samples too. And then, you know, they said, okay, so now you have this problem, let's go dig out your, the sample you have, then they run things. But was, we were sort of at their mercy of, you know, them doing the testing, yeah, so then we said, okay, we, we, we should have a. You know, five-gallon bucket of, of each one, so we requested that.
So there was no like free testing quality control certification or anything like that?
Yeah, there, there is some of that, but it's, you know, with, but would they, they passed all that with the last one too, you know, so it's.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, they probably didn't test for iron though, on the last one, until it was, till we found it, right?
Yeah, I believe they did not, yeah, I, I believe we were tested for that specifically, yeah.
Just seems like it'd be a lesson learned that maybe in the future, we want to make sure that they test it for. You know, iron, whatever else could come up naturally, it just, you, you know, we're not, I'm still not convinced that, that the. Pressure issue we got at well seven and eight is not related to that, it, it, just kind of ironic that it. You know, I don't know, it could be, so.
Yeah.
We're kind of stuck with that.
It, it's that seven and eight is, yeah, it's a, it's a, you know, we're struggling with that too, trying to like, what is that, you know, what is that problem there, yeah, because it's, uh.
Yeah, that was the only question I had about that, now, um, as far as the timing on Wells two and nine. What about the rest of the equipment, the V F Ds and other things that we were waiting for, valves or something?
Yeah, so the, uh, that, the V F Ds are both in, so we have both V F Ds, uh, we have the valves that are in. Um, and the generator is in, those are the three big things that we were waiting for.
Okay, so we have all that.
Yeah, so the one other, you know, semi-big thing, I guess, is the V F D cable for well nine, we do not have that. So we cannot, so the plant, when it would go online, it will go online with just well two. Um, but well two pump is, you know, we're going to typically run that, we had a couple of design points on that. And one of the design points was uh being able to pump uh twelve hundred and fifty gallons a minute out of that. You know, in the, in the situation, you know, that might come up, that well nine is offline for some reason. That you're doing, you know, a repair for it or something like that, cleaning, and you need the water. Uh, well nine is also going to have that same, you know, uh, capacity. Um, you know, in case well two has to get shut down for whatever reason, so. You know, if, if one of the others gets shut down, you should be able to still pump twelve fifty out of that. But when they normally run, they're going to be running more than a thousand gallon a minute range, so.
Right.
Um, so if you have, if you have to go online and you have to go with just one, you can get twelve fifty out of that, which is pretty good, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you spread that through both trains, you should get less um head loss too, at the lower flow rate, right?
Yeah.
If you run it through both trains, I don't know.
And, and we, and you do want to run it through, you know, you want to constantly add new water to your, to, you know, each, each vessel and each train, so.
Right.
Um, so if they're running one well, then this is, you know, some of the things that we'll have to work through with operational, you know, are they going to just constantly run it? Through both trains, no matter, um, what the, um, the flow rate out of the plant is. You know, or, you know, do they want to run it through one train? You know, for, you know, a couple of days, and the other train for a couple of days, so we haven't, you know, we just want to talk to the operators and make sure that they're comfortable with. With how they're going to be running it, so. There's minimum capacities on your, um, on your pumps of how much you could pump, and then there's also minimum capacities of how much you. Capacities on your, um, on your pumps of how much you could pump, and then there's also minimum capacities of how much you. Can be flowing through, you know, the vessels and stuff, so.
Yeah, if you flow too short, if you flow too little water, you can cause channeling and that's.
Yeah.
Auto, so there's a sweet spot, there's a high and low range in there. Um, as far as the wire, the VFD wire cable for well nine, still no word on when at all that could be.
I, I, you know, whenever we ask, we just, yeah, answer is no update, so, yeah.
I, I struggle with that.
You know, maybe we should say, when he wants payment, we say no payment.
Well, no update. There's more than one supplier of VFD cables.
Yeah, so they ordered this in June. So it's, you know, yeah.
Heck. Wow.
Well, I believe they ordered it in June because what they did was they submitted. A second shop drawing in June for a different, you know, from a different manufacturer. And then I assume they ordered that right after the approved shop drawn. And that, that shop drawn was approved in June, and they knew we were gonna be going online. You know, in September, at least that was the plan at that point, you know, so I assume they ordered it right off the bat, so I don't, you know.
Wow, I, I struggled with that.
I know. This, this has been his report for the last.
I know.
Three, four months.
But, and I know that in the meanwhile, my former employer has, you know, sold multiple new projects and buys, buys cable. Within a week. And I know this is probably a pretty thick, high gauge one, very.
It is, and it's V, is VFD cable compared to just a regular cable, so the VFD cable, yeah.
I, I know what it'd be, it's shielded and everything, right, yeah, so, but, but yeah, I mean, still.
Yeah, the wires are five hundred MCM cables, you know, so you got, each one of those is probably an inch, inch and a quarter thick. You know, so you have that wrap, you know, then you get your grounding wire there and everything's all wrapped up with it, you know, so it's, it's a pretty meaty cable when you look at it.
Sure is.
Yeah.
Doesn't change the fact that.
Okay, how many it is, that's like.
Yeah.
Well, there's also multiple suppliers, is what I'm saying, it's not just one. So, question, is anybody making the effort looking for that?
All right, anything else on two and nine, or you wanna move on?
Um.
The other questions, anybody? All right.
Okay, uh, then, uh, four, five media changeout, so, um, we ended up, uh. That media got brought back last week, got put back into the vessels. Um, that got, uh, flushed out on Monday. Um, bacteria samples were taken on that, that, you know, hopefully when results come back on that, that will be. You know, ready to go back online.
We, we got them back, it's online right now.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yep. And we received a, you know, certificate that, you know, the, what's that?
That we're supposed to get the certificate that it's.
Right, right, the certificate of, you know, disposal or something of, uh.
We got a.
Destruction, yeah.
Got a letter or something that said where.
Yeah, and they were, and it was sort of had some weasely words in it, you know, that they, you know.
Yeah. It wasn't, uh, it wasn't like a get out of jail free card or anything, but.
Yeah.
It's something close, but.
Yeah, yeah, they, uh, I think that definitely had, uh. Uh, lawyers involved with writing that with the, you know, language they are putting in it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions on four, Wells four and five?
Yeah, so on four and five, just the other thing is, uh, you know, so we're, you know, so with the data, we got the December data, we're just compiling that now, but. It's a little bit of a, um, uh, we're just making sure all the data is right because now we're flipping lead lag and stuff like that. So we, we wanna, uh, just be doing that, we're just gonna try to, on our graph, try to put a vertical line in. You know, where, you know, the date that we changed out and all this kind of stuff, so we're just, we're just, you know, doing that, so, um. That should be coming very shortly to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think the January samples were taken one last week.
Yes.
Yeah, so. I know your next commissioners meetings, uh, late, right, cause you're not doing President's Day, so it's the twenty-seventh, right, or something like that?
Right.
Yeah, so we might, we might have also that, you know, depending on how fast that data comes in, we might be able to get that and tuck it into the graph too.
The twenty-third. We moved it up. We moved it up.
Oh, wait, you, that's right, you did go to the twenty-third, that's right, I remember that, that email, I do have that in my calendar now, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, put that in your calendar.
Um, yeah, yeah, it was on a Thursday, yeah, okay.
Right.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I'm, I don't, yeah, that'll be questionable if we have any January data by then, I don't know, we'll, we'll see, we'll, if we can, we'll try to sneak it in there. Get it in, but if we have to get your packet to you a few days earlier, you know, it's. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the January, I mean, the, uh, the January sampling on Wells four and five was done just after the. I guess the lag vessel with no lead vessel media, right?
I believe it was just one vessel, that, is that correct, Jill and Ron?
So that, that's probably gonna, if that's gonna show breakthrough, then there's a reason why there, you know what I mean, if there's no other. It's coming in fully loaded into that vessel instead of going through the first vessel, you know. First vessel was empty. We might see some higher PFAS.
It's, there's gonna be a spike in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If not in this one, then it's gonna be in the next one because it may take some. Screw.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Uh, Wells seven and eight?
Yeah, well, seven and eight, we, um. Uh, well, you know, Ron, you know, mentioned a little bit about some of the operational things that we're just, uh, looking to do with, you know, the, uh, head loss there. Uh, but in terms of the construction side of it, uh, the iron analyzers in and, uh. Uh, the contractor is gonna be coming in to install that, um, you know, uh, in February. And then we just gotta do, you know, coordinate the, uh, some SCADA upgrades, you know, for that. And then do some training for it, and then we'll be done, so, um. We're hoping that we're gonna be able to finalize up everything with, uh, the contractor in March, so.
Okay.
So that'll be good.
And then we're still, uh, backwashing like every month, or is it getting more frequently on that one vessel that's restricting flow?
Yeah, it's roughly every month.
Yeah.
And it's actually creeping into the second vessel as well as starting to get a.
Oh, really?
A pressure differential there, it, so we gotta. So I was hoping we'd get, need to get two on as soon as we can, and that might, my thought would be to shut well seven and eight right off and. That's when we need to figure out what we need to do.
Yeah, kind of, I kind of wish we could, um, change out that lead vessel. At some point, not, not too far in the future, you know, just. I just don't know. I, I wish we would know what is causing the problem, like, you know, I don't know if it's the original iron issue or if it's some other.
Yeah, that's the thing, and, uh, you know, I've, you know, and we are looking to have, you know, meeting on that with, you know. Excuse me, with Ron and his operators and trying to figure out some, you know, uh, approach on that. Um, but yeah, I, I would not wanna change it out too quickly and, you know, in case we wanna be doing some testing and stuff like that, we don't wanna kind of get rid of. What we have there, um. You know, it would be nice, you know, I, you know, I think it would be nice to, you know, open, you know, try, get a lift in there to open up that hatch and. Drain it down and get a sample off of that top and, you know, we're doing, we're doing a lot of guessing, you know. Um, and it, you know, it really, really like to see what's, what's there, so.
And the wells, when were they cleaned, so it's. Trying to think if it's something in the wells that were, um. I know there's like a, there's like a slime sometimes that develops in wells that I've heard about. And, and it's like a clear gelatinous thing, I don't know if that's what we're seeing, I'm just surmising, you know, I don't know.
But it's not clear, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a brown, is a brown slime.
Oh, it is brown, okay.
Yeah, cause it clogs up all there, cause it has that iron in it, so it's gonna have that rusty brownish color to it.
And that goes through, that goes through the green sand vessels, okay?
And that's, and that's where, you know, I don't wanna get into too much fatigued, cause I know you got a lot to do tonight, you know, but, uh. You know, that, you know, they, you know, that's one of the things, we, we are looking at doing some testing and we did do some lab testing on. Some, um, raw water, you know, going into the plant, you know, before the green sand, after the green sand. And it shows it all the way up, you know, before you're going into green sand, but not after green sand. You know, so it doesn't show it there, so it's like, okay, so that means the green sand is, you know, supposedly taken it out. So if that's the case, then what is kind of clogging?
Yeah.
You know, you know, the G A C, you know. You know, it, it's, it's kind of, you know, you kind of, you know, I, I kind of look at us, if we're, you know, we, we've been talking a lot about it in-house and we wanna talk the operations, but, you know, if you're. If you're running, if you're back, backwash in the, uh, the green sand, you know. You know, what is it every five or six days, Ron, is that what you're doing?
I don't, I don't know what the schedule is, right, get this more.
But if, just say it's a week for, you know, conversational purposes, you know, and then your backwash and your G A C, you know. You know, every five weeks, it's like, you know, wow, you're, 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 you're backwashing, you know. The G A C, you know, one fifth of the time that you're backwashing, your green sand, your green and, and the effluent coming out of. So if you were guessing that, oh, maybe a little concentration is coming through the, um. The green sand and then getting caught on the G A C, but then you go, but it's only last, you know, that would be an argument if it says, okay. You know, after four months, it starts to build up, but if you're saying only after five weeks, you're saying, you know, how is that? You know, I don't know, it, it, that seems like that, if, if a little bit was going through, it really wouldn't clog up in five weeks, you know, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, yeah, I mean.
You know.
We gotta find out, cause if, if it's. Yeah, we're having like, it seems like we're having pretty rapid breakthrough of PFAS through those filters too, and it's, I don't know if it's cause we have to backwash. The, the, you know, the lead vessel and, but, you know, we're gonna be talking about this policy next on the agenda.
Yeah, I saw that.
I think PFBA is probably breaking through right now on that second vessel, it looked like it was at the. Seventy-five percent pour or something in the last round of sampling, so.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's why I'm just wondering, but again, the timing wise, you can't, you can't change the media out at seven and eight until well two and nine are up. This is, this is what we're always gonna be facing, you know.
Filter we could.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, we try like, like four or five, we have a four or five, and I wanna say, to answer your question for the Wells, I think well, seven is due next, that'll probably be. April as well. Would confirm that, cause I did ask him to do it as early as he possibly could, okay? I was gonna say, that, that makes me really, really nervous when I hear April. Usually. That makes me, that sounds like repetition of last year. Yeah, no, it, we asked him to do it earlier, eight was done in the fall, fall, that would be. Next fall when we do eight again, so it's, it's kind of. Okay. But eight, uh, seven is coming due for that cleaning, um, my question, so if there is a. A growth on the G A C at seven and eight, could that be taking up some of the space for?
That, that, it certainly, you know, that's certainly something that we talked about, so, and. And it, and it's hard to tell that, and that's where it'd be nice to get some samples of some of that stuff to see, you know, really what it is, but that's certainly. You know, and, and, you know, so we initially thinking that it was sort of, uh, blinding the top of the vessel. You know, compared to going all the way through because Brian put those pressure gauges on all of the, you know, uh, test ports. So he was able to see that the head loss was mostly in that.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent, and that wouldn't be a bad thing to do again, I know we did that, you know, that was probably four months ago, I think that he did that. So it would, you know, it might be an idea to, to look at that again and see where the pressure differential is, but. We, you know, it showed it at the top, so we were always thinking that the top was the part getting it and it wasn't getting down, but. Yeah, you know, if you're getting something else in there, there's always that possibility that it is, you know. You know, taking up some of the, the, you know, the ports where PFAS would be connected, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it depends whether it's getting filtered on the top or if it's kind of something that's dissolved and just passing through and. But, you know, getting absorbed to the carbon.
Yeah, but when we, when we did the test, you know, you know, and, you know, analyzed test, it showed, you know, that there wasn't anything in the F, the green sand effluent.
Wow.
You know, that's, that's the, that's the funny thing, you know.
Yeah. Do you guys still have a direct line with, uh, Dr. Jim Malley at U H, I don't know if he ever would have an idea what could be going on?
And we certainly, you know, we could talk to him about that, you know.
Yeah, I don't know, so. Or if anyone else has experience, you know, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel, but.
Right.
Okay. Well, anything else you wanna?
And I know, you did, uh, I wanted to, was Lynetta had asked if we wanted to send any of this out to Evoqua to see what they. Their opinion as far as the. Where it's getting into the second vessel. And it's, it's not coming through the, the green sand and, in the testing that we've done. I, I'm fine with that, I don't know how much help they're gonna be, but we're definitely fine with that as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we, you know, they came out and did some, you know, testing and stuff, then, you know, some of the stuff they were saying is, you know. They were thinking that it was something to do with, you know, with the, the slime that you had, you know, you know, before. You know, it's coming out of your wells and stuff, so. So then we started doing some, you know, work, you know, you know, you know, Brian and stuff, you know, the workers were. Doing some of that and testing it, and so we have some more results and stuff that we are thinking about, okay. Hey Evoqua, here's some more reason, you know, information we have, do you have anything, you know, else that you can provide us for input, so we are. You know, we were just, you know, that was one of the questions that Lynette asked Ron, is like, uh, you know, do you think it's all right, we can share this information and. See if they have any kind of a, an answer, so.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with the P, I, I had mail issues today, so I haven't, actually, it's been going on for a while, so I. I can write emails, uh, intermittently.
Yeah.
Right. All right, anything else on well seven and eight? No, okay, uh, I don't know if you wanna stay on for this next agenda item, Pete, or not, um.
Yeah, I, I have work to do, so I'm gonna be here, so I, I have, uh, you know, if you, you know, I'll, I'll stay, I'll stay listening and stuff, and if you have any questions. I'll try to answer them, yeah.
Right, appreciate that, thanks. All right, so, uh, number three on the agenda, Board of Commissioners to discuss lead vessel. G A C media changeout policy. Uh, and possibly engaging an expert to review the Irish tox- toxicology, toxicol- oh my god. Toxicological review of, for fluorobutanoic acid, PFBA, um. I had a bunch of, um. Sources here about the effects of PFBA. Um, it's listed here as, uh, primarily a product of other PFAS breakdown. Um, studies of this has associated it with, um. Thyroid hormone diseases. Hepatic enzymes, birth outcomes, just, it's just a bunch of things in here. Um. It does li- list lack of studies on humans, um, in a lot of these. These studies that have been done. Um. But. As far as, um. Hiring a toxicolog- toxicologist to review this. Um. So PFBA just had a, um. They just had, um, what am I trying to say here? Toxicological profile done on it, and it's, I reviewed it, it's, it's very confusing, it's kind of over my head. But, um, there was another report here that I got. Um, Lorene Allen sent it over to me, it was a report that was produced by, um. A woman named, was part of the report, Katie Pelch, and I, I recognize her name, I know she's in the PFAS community, not Merrimack, but.
Used to live in town, right?
She's well, um, she's well versed in it, um, I don't know if she's in town or not.
I used to think.
She might have been. Uh, but she had put together sort of a, um, a review of that toxicological profile. As part of the, um. Here, she's with the N R D C, Natural Resources Defense Council. Um, and it it calls her name out on here as being one of the authors of this. Review of the toxicological profiles. Um, and some of the important things that are mentioned in her review, you know, is this. Um, apparent shortcomings, what she believes in the, in the profiles that were developed. You know, again, it's a. Toxicological review supports conclusion that developmental thyroid liver effects in humans. Uh, caused by P F B A exposure in utero or during adulthood. Um, literature, literature search. Uh, already at least three years old, so that the profiles that were developed were based on literature that. Um, is already three years old. You know, so there's a lot of new information that's not even included in those. Um. You know, it says Americans at risk of exposure to P F B A will generally have greater than. Typical exposures due to legacy P fast chemicals as well. That's basically saying that there's more exposure risk for. Um. You know, um. Communities that are already impacted, which is all Merrimack, you know, essentially Southern New Hampshire, basically. So I I don't think I would need to. Think that M V D needs to hire someone to interpret this for us, like, you know, so. Kind of brings us back to the original point of, the main point of this. Um, discussion was what do we feel is appropriate about changing, if we want to change the lead G A C vessel media out? Based on P F B A breakthrough. I'm just gonna put on the table, one of the things I think, we looked at the budget at the last budget hearing, and I think we added some additional. Uh, P F B A breakthrough, G A C media changeouts. Um, and I think we're basing it on like every eight months, the budget. So, in order to kind of jive with that, I guess. Does it, would would we entertain a policy that says? To change P F B A at the first breakthrough? In the. Lead vessel. Or after eight months, whichever occurs later. I guess I'm trying to reach a compromise in my mind here with the people who say, I don't want to spend more money, the customers. Changing out P F B A more frequently than it's. Required or or than we. And and, you know, if we, if we keep it consistent with what's budgeted, my fear is that if we put this into a policy to change it out. As soon as it breaks through, what if it breaks through in like four months? Because we don't know what our lag vessel now is gonna be able to handle. Because it's already been compromised, now it's gonna be the lead vessel, so.
Right.
Uh, we we, so everything, all the data we've collected at all our plants so far has been on two brand new, fresh. Carbon vessels, lead lag. Now we've got, like at Wells four and five. The former lag vessel is now the lead vessel, it's, it's already been compromised, P F B A's already broken through that, so. I don't think we're gonna get the run life that we did in two fresh vessels, I can guarantee we're not. So, I'm afraid if we just say a policy, as soon as we see P F B A in the lead vessel, change it out. We may be committing to something that's. Extremely more costly than what we're budgeting for. You know, that's.
But I don't see, I don't see how that it makes a difference, and maybe I'm not having enough understanding of the, of the, of the. Um, saturation curve, right? But. In, in Neyman's terms, and as a dumb mechanical and automation engineer. I would say that if the lead vessel already allows breakthrough of a certain substance, and I'm assuming it's somewhat of a linear. Saturation curve of some sort, might be some variance, and maybe at the end it gets a little bit steeper, what do I know? But I'm assuming over the course of the nature, it's somewhat linear. So I would assume the moment it breaks through the lead vessel, it shortens the lifespan. Of the lag vessel.
Yeah, the saturation is already.
So no matter what, any, any compound really for that matter, that we allow. Or any, any contaminant, I should say, that we allow to break through the lead vessel, no matter what reduces the lifespan of the lag vessel. So this is one of those things where people are joking about, you know, uh, um, about uh. Uh, daylight savings time, that only the government thinks that you can save something by the end of the day. Of daylight saving by chopping off a piece of the top of the blanket and sewing it at the bottom of the blanket, that's what I'm hearing. We're not. We're not gaining anything by delaying the la- the lead vessel's replacement. Because the only thing it does, it damages the lag vessel further and drives the replacement of the lag vessel, lag vessel. Um, up in the schedule, it expedites.
So, so it's almost like we need like two brand new vessels in order to really get this to not affect the second vessel, you know?
Well, or we have to accept that once we replace. Once we swap the lead and lag vessel, right?
It's almost time to swap the new lead.
I I'd be sooner than we think it is, right?
Right. Which is almost like putting two new.
But I mean, in the end, that's, that's a question for our engineers as far as what they predict from what they're seeing right now, but. I don't think that we can save anything at all. From, from the knowledge that I have, by delaying the lead vessels. Change out. Because the only thing that happens is the lag vessel gets damaged.
Right. So, to make matters worse, we have this rollover thing that's happening too, which means.
Right.
The raw water coming in P F B A.
Right.
Is lower than the finished water coming out.
Right.
Because it's, it's bumping off those P F B A molecules and pushing them further down the vessel in. The finish water is actually higher than the raw water coming. Right now, at Wells four and five, or it was before we changed the media, so.
The only thing that I see is that we can save the days by adding a filtration methodology that takes care of the short chains.
Yeah.
Because now we can load up the G A C filters with all the compounds, including the lower saturating or slower saturating. Uh, traditional P fast. And while everything breaks through, through maybe even both lead and lit, or maybe we we added in between the two, right? Um, ideally, that's what we do.
Hmm.
But um. We protect the lag vessel from the breakthrough of the short chains, or we try to get the short chains out of. What we probably have to do with after the G S E.
So I, I think in the long run, you're right, I think on O and M, it's probably better for us to look at. Uh, a resin vessel.
Right.
After the two lead carbon vessels. You know. In our treatment plants, they were building expansions that were contemplated beyond. The plants that we have today.
Right.
You know, I see that as probably something further down the road that we might want to look into. Uh, so I guess the question is, what do we do any interim? Uh. You know, the other thing we got to think about is we got a wholesale agreement with Pennachuck on the table. We're buying water from Pennachuck, which we will, if we have a wholesale agreement, we're gonna want to buy. The amount of water that we need to break even, at least right on that. They're gonna be sending us P F B A and. P F O A even. So that kind of conflicts with what we're trying to do with our own vessels. You know, we're trying to get non-detect. On our own vessels, but yet we got this water coming into us. With P F O A, P F B A, and, you know, it's all compliant, but obviously it's detectable. Um, but.
But we can ignore P F B A as a whole.
No, I I don't like the fact that it's, it's coming out higher than what's going in.
Right.
I'm really bothered by that.
Right, I agree.
Um. So, I mean, I, that's, so I was just putting that out there about changing P F B A in a lead vessel, either when it breaks through or at eight months. You know? It's, it's better than what we have now. Um, it it kind of puts us in balance with our budget, because we budget it based on eight months. And I think it kind of is a compromise between our customers that say. I want you to change it out as soon as it breaks through, and the customers that say. I don't want you to change it out at all if it's not even a regulated compound, it's. It's, it's kind of a happy medium in there. People aren't gonna like it on both sides of it. But that means it's a good compromise. Uh, you know, a- a- and again, if we just. If it's a policy, and let's say we sample this vessel, and in three months from now, we get P F B A breaking through at Wells four and five. We just, you know, we budget it for eight months, if we're gonna plan on changing that out in three months. And then is it gonna be another three months after the next one? So we're gonna have like. Three or four changeouts budgeted, where we only thought we'd have. Two in 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 the year, you know, I don't want to get into a situation, and we're talking about like seventy-eight thousand dollars. So it's, it's, it's not chump change, but. I think, I think when we had the last budget meeting, we figured it was like three point three percent of the whole budget, which, so it's not significant on the whole budget, but. It's, it's a, it's a significant cost nevertheless, you know?
I mean, we also have the option to basically be cautious now for the next year. And change it out as it breaks through while we're waiting for the new E P A guidelines that everybody's waiting.
That's true too, that's gonna, yep, yep.
No.
That's a good point.
And considering that we had lawsuits and lawsuits in the past against us because of that. It's gonna be cheaper to replace it proactively than fighting those lawsuits for the same amount of money. Right?
Yeah, we think that a legal interpretation from um, from Carrie, that she doesn't believe that there's any real. Legal exposure as a policy.
Right, doesn't mean that nobody can.
No, it doesn't mean anybody can do what they want, right?
Right. So, I mean, I mean, that compromise probably makes a lot of sense, because it tries to bridge a gap that's, that's undeniably there, right?
Yeah.
Better than what has been done in the past.
Hmm.
By, and what is still being done by a lot of water districts today. Right?
Oh, it's way better than probably anything.
Anywhere.
Other than, for some reason, at Husick Falls, it's required in the state of New York, how that happened.
We're not supposed to talk about that.
Good for them, God bless them. I don't hear anybody in our state make mayor. Unfortunately, it's, you know, the tale of two states.
So in the interest to, in the interest to, to shorten that discussion. Do we want to make a motion?
For what we want to do?
Just a, a, a policy, breakthrough, changeout policy.
Or eight months. That's specific one, I'm saying.
That, yeah, all right.
Can I wordsmith this a little bit? Because what happens at eight months if nothing's breaking through?
We let it run.
We let it run until, because you said.
Eight months, whatever's, whatever occurs last.
Okay. All right, I think I got it now.
So I mean, like you said, if it breaks through in three months.
We, at least we could plan and say, all right, month eight, let's get the trucks ready to roll.
Yeah.
And if it breaks through in six months, you know, we're still carrying it out to eight months.
Yeah.
But if, if for some reason we go eight months, it's not breaking through.
Then we hang out until we.
Let it go.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I, I don't know what else, I mean, you want to say six months? I don't know, we can always change this policy anytime we want to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Change.
You know, I was just saying eight months, because I think that's what we put in the budget.
The question is, do we need a policy for that?
I don't know.
Is that, is that the discussion that we had today? And we let it play out?
Yeah, I don't know that we need a vote, but um.
Well, if you want to do a vote, just to make it slightly more official, like you said, it's a policy, we can change.
I would prefer to have something.
That's right, on the record.
You know, everybody's got their opinion, and everybody has their vote on it. The customers would know if it's, if it passes, if it fails.
Want to draft the, draft the policy first and then vote on the policy after.
I like that.
Yeah, I guess at this point, we're proceeding with.
I don't think it's a bad idea to have a policy on. Changeout, so let's get something together.
I don't know if it needs to be.
Operational, but it.
Yeah.
You have other policies for operating, so.
I like that.
All right.
I can put something together and.
Does it hurt anything in the timeline to wait for that policy?
Um, I don't know, unless the latest vessel results show that it broke through at seven and eight. Do we want to? Well, it's broken through the lead. So.
Yeah.
But it sounded like, like Peter was advising us to let it go for a little longer, I'm not exactly sure why.
We really need to figure what's going on, I think, before we change.
Well, yeah, just to sample the media and all that, yeah, there's a, there's a bigger issue over there as far as operational.
Changeout, let's see what's going on over here. I don't want to go through changeouts.
So not to sideline this discussion, but. I'm hearing that we were, we've been trying for a while to basically get those samples, is there anything that you need from the board or anybody? That we can help you with making sure that this happens rather soon? For sampling, you know, getting up there to top of the tank and sampling.
Um.
Uh, the, you know, actually.
No, I'll just make it happen, because I, I, I know that's something that they, I mean, it's also been able to shut down as well, so we've had. Well, two, we need well two to come back online.
Right.
Or I, or I open up the Pennachuck. You know, interconnect and use that while we shut down.
Well, i- is that, would that help? I mean, is it, is it more that, is it more of like a labor shortage issue, overtime approval issue, is it?
No, no, it's just, it's just the water sources that we've had.
Right. So if, if, if you were to use the, the emergency connection, you, you would be able to do it sooner? To get that sampling done sooner?
Yeah.
And let's do it, right?
And we're not on the.
But spend that money.
We're not at that.
Not the wholesale rate.
Exactly, we're at the retail rate. Over to the right rate at this point, so.
I don't think we're pressed for source capacity right now, are we only at two, two million gallons a day right now?
Um.
Wells four and five is putting out. I guess.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, four and five, we're about six hundred gallons a minute right there, so we're just under. Or they're just.
That's still not even a million gallons.
Yeah, we're just under a billion, seven, yeah, seven hundred.
Yeah. So we kind of do need uh Wells two, nine to be up before you take down.
Well, we're, we're good for a day, we shut off well four and five for a day. While we're doing the bacteria test to bring it back online. And, you know. We're good for a day, we can, we have that capacity in our, in our, in storage that, you know, but if it's, you know. For a week or or whatever it would take to get that, to get seven and eight. Figured out or cleaned up or whatever we're gonna do, I don't know, we wouldn't have that capacity, but.
Well, we're still, are we still running well two raw into the, I mean.
We're not, no.
We're not, okay. And once we get the resin loaded in there, we probably want to run the well two through. I mean, not the resin, the carbon. Want to run well two through the carbon vessels.
Do we, do we need to wait for the P fast sets before we? We do.
Which is funny, because we can run the raw water into it now, and can't run this. Sounds like we're. Uh, well, I mean, you know.
Might, we might be able to, I don't know.
Yeah. And, yeah, for just around the corner where well two can run into the system. Through the carbon vessels, if it's close. Although it might be March, something Peter was saying towards the end.
Before that, but.
Yeah.
But I mean, if, if I can run. I just want the expense of.
I would prefer to hold off on the Pennachuck water. I just. It's like five thousand bucks a day or something, if it's uh.
I guess my concern is if. Uh, how many days do you think you need to get those sampling, samples, the actual media samples? Of the vessel?
Let me, let me ask Pete, I mean.
Pete, are you still on?
He's still on.
Yeah, I'm right here, just trying to find the button. Sorry about that.
So what was the question, how many days would Wells seven and eight have to be shut down in order to get a sample out of the um? The lead carbon vessel of? What's that?
I don't think it would be too long, because we are just have, well, the thing is, you got to coordinate, you got to get a lift in there to get up there to do the work, you know? Um, so once you, once you got all that stuff ready, you know, you would just, you know, shut off the plant. You know, he had to drain, you would want to drain down that um. Um, that vessel, you know, so when you're taking your scoop out of it, it's not getting all mixed up as you're pulling it up. Basically, you want to drain that water down to roughly the top surface of the G A C. Take, you know, take a scoop out of there, then you, you know, and because you're going back in there again, I think it would, you know. Get a bacteria sample. Would want to take a bacteria sample before they put it back online, yeah, so.
Um.
Pete, let me ask, ask you this, so. Would it void the warranty if we switched vessels? Alternate, so shut one vessel down, ran through the lag for a day.
Yeah.
And then flop them back.
Um.
You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and and then, you know, as we, as we looked at the, you know, your warranty, your warranty is, you know. It's worth some dollars, but it's not like huge dollars, you know, it's not like you're gonna be getting, you know, half a million dollars out of that, you know, so. If you lose your warranty, it's, you know, it's not a killer. So what was, what do we get for warranty money back for four or five? I forget what that dollar value was.
And I knew that we did.
We did get some, it was, it was. Three thousand dollars, something like that. We ended up spending. We ended up spending this total with uh. Like sixty-five thousand, well, it cut us the media as well, didn't it? They took it off.
Yeah, pretty, it pretty much bought the media that you.
Make up media.
The makeup media, yeah.
And it knocked the bill down like three grand or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, so I don't, you know, I think, you know. Totally basing a decision on that, on, you know, avoiding the warranty, I think it's, you know, I don't know. If you think it's the best operational, I don't know, it just seems, just seems like.
I guess we weigh it up to the cost of water from the, from Penn and Chuck to.
I mean, I mean, those are also operational decisions that don't need to be. Here, right, so. You know, if do what you gotta do basically and and.
And I think technically you already voided the warranty, because I think in the warranty, it says. You backwash three times, you know, and you backwash it more than three times. So I still think they're gonna come back and say, wait, wait a second, you know, you did this and stuff, so.
Yeah.
So I think technically you already avoided it, so.
So that's the case at this point. So it really doesn't matter. So, yeah, we wouldn't need to go into better truck that we can flip flop and.
Yeah, yeah, you could certainly do that. You could just run on one the lag vessel for for a few days.
And I would. Be. Saying that after the ordeal that we went through with the vessels and all the additional costs that we. Had to eat because of that damage on the vessel and delay, the delay on the second vessel. I think it wouldn't hurt to go back to the manufacturer to Evoqua. Even despite. Having violated the the warranty stipulations and say, listen. Let's strike a deal here. Look, you know, if if the need arose, you know.
I'm I'm really curious where this, if it's our issue or if it's something that came on the. And we need to figure that out and then later, we need to.
Yeah, right. If we have to swap over and lose the warranty, because we need to find out whether or not it's their issue or our issue. They should be pretty compliant and saying, you know, we're gonna.
It's gonna be on them, so.
Yeah, I mean, as a supplier to industrial businesses, I would say, go right ahead, not gonna touch that warranty. Yeah. Do what you gotta do so we can find out what the root causes. So.
So you wanna try and plan for um? What's involved with taking a sample on the top of that and probably coordinate with Evoqua, right, and see?
Yeah, that that's what we were gonna, you know, we were looking at uh trying to set up a meeting for this Friday, and that's, you know, that's one of the things that we wanted to talk about.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest requesting a statement from Evoqua that they're not gonna fuss with the warranty if we're doing this changeover, this temporary changeover. Even the backlash that we back flushed it three, more than three times. A little if he, if they would be fussing about the warranty because of that, because we might be doing it because of their issue, and we don't know right now.
Yeah, right.
So they should commit to that.
Okay. Um, alright, so we're still on this policy, but we just, so you're gonna come up with something written and.
Yep.
Do a vote on it officially, but I don't think we're in a position that, we voted on it tonight, then you'd have to set up a. Change out. Right away, we're not ready to do that anyway.
Well, worst case, we could have a quick meeting in two weeks, you know, half an hour meeting, board it through and be done with it.
But I think it's it's clear, I don't know, maybe we should take a media vote just to say that. We're all on the same page for. Proceeding with that kind of policy. I don't, I don't know, it's.
I don't think we need to vote for that, a statement is all we.
I'm getting the sense of the board, it's, you know.
Yeah.
We're interested in having a policy, definitely. Get a policy together and put on app, because we can work with it.
Alright.
By tune it and go from there, so.
Alright, that works for me. Any other questions on this comments? Alright, seeing none, I guess we can move on to um number four, Board of Commissioners, and discuss draft warrant articles. And I think uh. We have anything for Peter? I don't know if you're, I don't wanna have you hanging on if you got other stuff going on, Peter, but. Um.
I do, I'm doing a bunch of work right now. I I get a couple hours worth of work to do before I go home, so.
Wow.
Jeez.
Alright, uh, so yeah, warrant articles uh for the annual meeting coming up in uh March. Uh, get that in our packet here somewhere, right? For those, I may not finding. Alright, there they are. Okay, so one and two are just kind of elections. Um, was there any of these that you wanted to ask us anything about, or um we just go through one by one? I'm not sure what exactly.
No, that was more to get him finding, that's what we're, we're looking at for.
Okay.
So, but at this meeting, we need to get a vote for the warrant articles as substantially um. Written. Because D R I won't finish up their review until I put what the board recommendations are.
Okay.
As far as Article three, I guess Article one and two were good, right?
Article three, Carrie drafted.
Right, uh, I, I would like to see maybe as a recommendation um to be discussed with legal. Um, a a note why we were we were suggesting this year, right, and it could be as simple as uh. Sheldon Merrick Village District vote to enter rati, 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 rati for the purpose of. Uh supplemental water supply. That's not there, that what I just said, right?
Yeah, I don't see it, you're right.
Right, so basically at the end of the sentence here, um. Well, yeah. That's it's it's an elephant census, right, but ba- basically, it would include basically the explanation why, for the purpose of supplemental water supply.
So on the, I mean, we could certainly do that as well for the warrant, but I. We have a um.
Right.
Thank you, that'll go in with the.
Right.
Oh, the backup.
The backup, so.
This is just a form of the warrant.
No, I realize it, but it's it's still more transparent to, I mean, it could be as simple as Sheldon Merrick Village District comma. Uh, in order to uh secure um. A supplemental supply of drinking water, comma, vote to enter into a multi-year agreement. And I don't see any reason why that would hurt, not that I'm a lawyer, but I don't see any risk and exposure, and we should certainly discuss that with Carrie. But it would make this right away clear why we're doing this.
So you can just add pennant chuck wa- after the words pennant chuck water works. You can just add, see if she is okay with adding. For for um supplemental water.
Right, for the purpose of securing supplemental water source. Because, you know, somebody that is not involved in any of these meetings or hasn't read the minutes, they might read into. Is M V D now starting to sell out, right, to and the two or third party? Right, and that's certainly not what we're achieving here, what 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 we want to achieve. So having that little clarification in here would be, I think, very helpful.
And then uh. Who has the number that gets filled in where it says total?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I. I have that number.
Is that over three years? Is that what that number is supposed to be?
The total.
Three year total?
No, that's the, that's the.
That would.
Is it, is it thirty year total?
It's a total amount of whatever paid over a term of three years.
Right.
At three hundred dollars. Yeah, I just want to confirm that number. It's just three times that.
Okay.
Uh, sorry, I thought it was a hundred and something. And then. I think that's for one year. Yeah.
The three hundred is for one year.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it says each annual payment.
Yeah, that's not a, that's not a three year total.
No, but the word total in capital letters. On that second, the second line in there. That needs to be, I was asking. Where it says total in parentheses?
Yep, yep.
So as long as we knew where that number was coming from, the only question I had too is uh, this is a three fifths? Was super majority required on here?
For Carrie, so. Put their email.
So I know Keith had mentioned the only reason this needs to go to. Town meeting, annual meeting is because it's a multi-year contract. Right, it's not the amount over a hundred thousand, we're not borrowing this money. Right, so it's, it's so in either case is required a three fifths majority? I just wanna make sure Carrie's not thinking. It's a three fifths majority because it's over a hundred thousand dollars.
I can check with her.
Did you just confirm that? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, and I almost wanna say that because it's.
It may be.
Because it's over a hundred thousand, I wanna, that's the way I wanna think of it. The other reason why. It's a three year multi-contract plus it's over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. And you have another warrant article here. That is allowing us to take this out of capital reserves later, so maybe the way this is written now, Article three. It is thinking it's a hundred thousand dollar. But we're not borrowing that money, that's the thing I'm having a hard time with. Alright, just confirm with her if if the three fifths is there because it's over a hundred thousand, or if it's because it's a multi-year contract, or. What makes it a three fifths majority, I guess is my question, that's all.
But the one that comes up later, we're adding to the capital reserve account.
To kind of fund this.
To fund this, so we can pull this out of the capital reserves, but it also changes the wording, so it's not. More, it's not a uh.
Emergency.
Emergency more than.
Yeah.
Specific.
Alright, so Article four, are we good with Article three?
Which article is that? The one you just referred to, that's.
Um.
Will be later to hold out a capital reserve, I'll see that.
Yeah, maybe we should jump to that one.
Article seven. Um, sorry to uh change the wording or for the that we're pulling from the.
They were pulling out of that out of capital reserve, specifically the 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 funds Article three.
Article seven, so. So the Merrick Village District vote to raise appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to add to the district's non-capitalized reserve fund. RSA thirty-five, oil and one dash C for the purpose of emergency water. In our operations. Facility. If honorable signature passes, then the purpose of this.
We shouldn't.
Purchase of in water, yeah.
Shouldn't Article seven then be Article four?
I think the money are um.
Hit Carrie, look out to the budget needs to be next.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, right. Alright, so if we're looking at Article seven. Uh. Anybody have any comments, questions on Article seven? Again, this is just taking the hundred and fifty thousand dollars and adding it to the. Non-capital reserve fund. This isn't the one that changes the wording of emergency, though, is it?
I don't think that's it.
I don't know. Oh, yeah, our. Oh, what was that?
I don't, uh.
Six.
Oh, yeah. That's the one.
Yeah, since our six passes.
Alright, so Article six is uh. Vote to change the purpose of the existing emergency water and or operations and maintenance of G A C treatments facilities. Non-capital reserve fund. Created by Warren Article six, the March twenty twenty-one annual meeting to the purchase of, so it's changing. It's getting rid of the emergency part. Right, and it's just uh, it's just for the purchase of water and or the operations and maintenance of G A C facilities.
And why are we not?
Cause that's where the money's coming from for Article three, so. Article three is not an emergency situation, so we gotta change the fund that we're funding it with. From an emergency, right?
It wouldn't have been an issue, but it was just to make it more.
Consistent, consistent, yeah.
Right, but why not leave the emergency and only add the purchase of water to the language? Um. Instead of making two changes at once, because we might need to change this back some other day, right, when we have an emergency? So why not leave the emergency purpose?
With the purchase of water, we need it. Before we've only had it. It probably should have been purchased water originally, just.
Yeah, but what about to say, for example, if we have another issue and we need to buy or or rent a temporary G A C, you know, mobile G A C filtration vessel? On some. Well, that bad truck, you know, like like Hussey Falls had temporarily or something like that.
If it's. If it says the purchase of water instead of emergency. Then we can still be purchasing water under the conditions of an emergency.
Right, but I'm not saying.
So you don't need the emergency night to be in there, you need the purchase of water to be.
No, I want both in there. I wanna leave it as an emergency, so we can spend that money if need be for an emergency. And I wanna also allow us to buy water, purchase water, if that's the solution for the emergency. You know, there might be some days where we can purchase water, and instead we have to have some temporary. Thing in place.
I guess what I'm saying is we can purchase water for whatever reason we want, whether it's an emergency or not.
Yeah.
Of saying it's maybe purchasing water, whether it isn't gonna be the solution.
Correct.
Maybe it might be a unit or something else that provides water.
Right.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be covered under the and or operation and maintenance of the treatment facilities?
Like, what he's saying is if.
Yeah.
Purchasing the water is not gonna be a help.
Oh, okay.
Second half of that sentence.
If we leave that into the operating.
Sixth, Article seven, vote refer to G A C.
Yeah, right, so it's not for the production of water, but for the G A C treatment facilities only. So we're we're losing the ability to respond to an emergency that is not resolved. By purchasing water, if we're taking that out, right? That's kind of my point, like, like you said.
Yeah.
That'd be.
Say we might be that. We could talk to Carrie on that, I think we'd be covered under equipment and facilities, if there was an emergency.
Okay.
To be able to.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna take anything away that we already have voted in place.
Right.
And by adding the language, it's gonna allow us to maintain that. What we have in place.
Reason we added the G A C in this one originally was so that it. It had a multiple use, it wasn't just. If we didn't have to purchase water, then it would just sit in the account. If we need for another, another purpose as well, so.
Alright, so you're gonna check. Check with Carrie on that to see if we can keep the emergency in the wording there, is that what you're, is that what we're?
Talking about.
What?
I don't.
I was gonna check with Carrie to see if the equipment and facilities would cover any independent emergency other than.
Alright, I see.
Yeah.
I mean, if I'm the only one seeing a problem, don't bother. You know? So. I just figured we have something in place that took us an effort to get there in the first place. And why take it out if the only thing we can do? Is to add that language for the purchase of water? Right, that's my point. We have, this was voted in place at some point in twenty twenty-one, right?
Right.
So why, why cut ourselves short in? Having the flexibility if in case we ever need it. If all we're really trying to do is to allow us to purchase water with those ones.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Um.
But again, if I'm the only one seeing, seeing. That as an option, don't, don't worry about it.
I'll check with Carrie. Although if we need a vote on this tonight, it's. Floating all in the air right now, so I don't really know.
What is the timeline for those? You need to vote tonight on all of these, or?
They don't. I need a vote, a vote next week. And we are still, if somebody reveal them, they won't reveal them, they pass them.
So it looks like they're looking for a vote on each article, right? So we should probably uh. Guess we should probably do that then. Um.
But we can't vote on Article three because we have to clarify a couple of things, right?
Well, I think. Forward.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, I was just.
By legal or something?
I was just questioning that confirm the three fifths thing. I'm I'm, we'd still vote in favor of it.
We'll confirm the total amount, we'll confirm the annual payment.
Right.
That's all in the contract already, so it's not like. You change.
Right. Okay.
Alright, well, going back on Article three. Someone wanna make a motion to, what do we have to do? Motion to approve that as to. Someone want to make a motion to, what do we have to do? Motion to approve that as to? Bring it forward to what for the D R A? What what exactly motion are you looking for?
Um, just to to approve the articles of foreign articles. With. Revisions illegal. Forward to the public hearing.
We can vote for all of them at once, or do we have to go item by item? Let's get going here.
Alright. Well, then if we don't, we'll have to go do them individually. Well, let's let's go through them and if if we do them all at one. I don't know if we can do them all in one, and if nobody objects and they're all unanimous, then.
Well, do we have to go through them? I mean, they're on the record because. It's going to take us fifteen minutes to go through all of them. Does anybody have specific questions to any of them?
Yeah, I don't. That's a good way to ask it, too. Does anybody have any other? Any other clarifications that we need before we? Let's let's say we're going to entertain a motion to approve all of these articles. In one shot. Does anybody have any reservations before doing that? Questions on any of these articles?
I just want to know that Michelle is going to be able to speak to why we're moving all this money around and how much money is in each account and that. We need that much in each account. And I'd say. I'm in.
These are good numbers. I did talk to Michelle, so. The hundred fifty. Get us up to that the non capital reserve account. To cover the pen and check. That is approved. For for next for.
That'll cover the three hundred thousand for the.
Twenty three, twenty four budget here. Oh, is that what you were referring to?
I think you can hear.
So John, you just wanted, you just wanted to confirm Michelle's going to be able to answer questions at the at the.
I just remembered Tom Cony coming up last time asking specific things that I would never be able to answer, so. I'm sure she can, so. Yeah, it's fine.
That's why she gets the big bucks. Alright, Article Four, this is just basically the the budget number, right? That's what the TBD is there and we're gonna. Have a better. Budget number at the next workshop thereafter. Alright, any questions on number four? Not, we can move on. Number five, this number five is this one that kind of. Recurs every year, so I think that's kind of straightforward, right? Number six, I think you were just going to go back and check with Carrie about the wording. Do we lose anything if we get rid of the word emergency? But I think everybody else in in light of that change is still in favor. Any other questions on that one? Number seven. Uh, let's see, I had a thing here. Okay. Yeah, this is the one that says if Article Six passes. Purpose of the purchase of water and or operation with the GAC facilities. What is that again? Now, if Article Six passes.
Just saying where that money's coming from.
Okay. Any questions on number seven there? If not. One, number eight. Is this the cap, the system development capital reserve? This is the. The fifty two thousand five hundred is what was left over.
That is what it's the. Was made in the system development.
Oh, okay, alright.
Was collected by the S T C charge.
Right, so it's just taking what money was.
Transfer out of the budget into into capital reserve.
Everybody square on that one, except me apparently, okay. Article nine. Shall the district vote to raise an appropriate sum of two hundred thousand? And that's equipment and facilities capital reserve.
That's an increase.
Was that also? So that's the unassigned fund balance, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Uh, number ten, so this one, number ten, we're changing all of that wording in. Where it says from. We're changing it to where the wording says to. And that's just basically to be consistent with the billing periods here. Instead of quarterly in three months, it's going to be. Monthly in thirty days.
Yep. That's what you're changing.
Alright, so if there's no other questions, I guess we can entertain a motion to approve all of these Warren articles as. Written or amended. Drafted?
Drafted with revision legal. And approval of D R A.
So moved.
Sounds good. Motion by Wolf, second by Paul. Other questions, comments? If not, all those in favor of approving all the Warren articles signified by. No, now that it passed, I'm in favor of. Changing the art, the Warren article anyways, yeah. Yep. Uh, so all those in favor of approving the Warren articles to move forward signify by saying aye. Aye. John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero, no abstentions, no. Oppositions. Okay. Good, moving on to. Number five. We're only about ten minutes behind now. Alright, so now we're discussing the Verizon Wireless Lease Change Proposal. Next in the packet there, so that's good.
So I struggle with that. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, there were a few things in there that I caught. I didn't think they were in our favor.
I mean, in light of what's happening with the world and. Inflation and cost increases left and right to ask for a significant reduction in payment. I recognize and and then, I mean, the the rent escalated ten percent over five years versus three percent every year.
Right.
I don't know, I don't know.
Could we ask what would that reflect to the Verizon?
Just so you're aware too, this is our highest.
When it was negotiated like that when it was entered, right, so.
The other ones are still building them too.
So the current monthly rate is twenty six, twenty six, and they want to lower it to two thousand. Am I reading that correct? Did they give a reason why? Other than they save money?
That they hired to.
So they're coming in, you know, on one side and, you know, it's like this, like this, like this. Meet somewhere in the middle.
I mean, the only value that I see is that they're saying they want to extend. The timeline here, but they're saying additional renewal terms, right? Seven additional five year renewal terms. Which is a thirty five year commitment, then if I read that right.
It's, I don't think it's. First five years are, and then and then every five years after that, they can terminate.
Right, so. Do we need a motion or?
Motion to say what? No?
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Remove.
You want to word that properly for the?
I want that worded. Do we just want to say no instead of giving them a counter offer?
I mean, what what value do we have here?
I mean. Say three grand. Well, does your cell phone bill go down at all since you got it so?
No, everything went up. I put forth the motion that. Deny the.
When is this currently expire?
It says on here twenty twenty six, but Kristen and I went through. The lease, so it's expiring in twenty twenty five.
And what happens when it expires? Do they take their cell phone tower and go home?
They can.
They're going to put.
Exactly.
Yeah. They, yeah, they can. I watch them in parks. I can have some reception for a change ever down there with reception ever.
They have to, I think I get what the terms is. They have to notify us, I think sixty days prior to the expiration. And if they do not do that, then it automatically renews.
Yeah, we should get a market value, a market valuation on this rent from somebody like a realtor would probably do it for a small fee. Figure out what other people are are offering, that sort of thing, massing properties for sale with cell phone leases on them for eight hundred thousand dollars. So.
Where is this? Where is this self tower?
This one's on Turkey Hill, I believe.
Yeah, it's on the big. Turkey Hill tank?
Well, that'll be easy to get there.
Doesn't even say where it is.
Is it up the top of that hill?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, killer, I mean, uh, keep in mind, this is a public meeting and they have any, you know, any any ability to 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 hear our comments.
True.
My comment is simply, everything went up, period.
Yes.
Everything across the board.
Correct.
And we are not in a position to explain to our ratepayers that we're dropping the the rent on a commercial.
Right.
Lacy, right, or not DC, you know what I mean? We just can't, period. But I mean, that's that's my, that's my statement. I'm not speaking. So, you know, appreciate appreciate their position and why they're asking for it, but.
The verbiage, just for discussion, the rent escalator is better. Like you said, I just punched the number in and it's like, it is fifteen percent. Three percent compounded over five years. Is fifteen percent.
Current one. Because the new one, they're saying. Ten percent every five years.
Yeah, so this being fifteen.
Going the other way.
Yeah, so they're they're trying to drop everything, but they they're expanding the timeline.
Like you said that.
But the reality, they won't be spending it by basically two years, because after the first five years, they can cancel anyway, whenever they want to.
No. Alright, glad I glad you pointed that out. Yeah, definitely, it's not, this is not. It's not in our favor at all. I like I go forth a motion to. Deny the lease modification proposal. Put forth by. Uh, Verizon. Do we need anything else more than that? Letter dated December twenty seven, twenty twenty two. Yeah, first site number. Four, six, three, nine, nine. Wherever that shall be.
I believe it is Turkey Hill.
I'm pretty sure, not that it matters. I mean, we're going off. Yeah. Whatever the proposal was. Alright, that was a motion by Paul. I think it was a second by John.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Not? We can take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alright, so that's four zero zero, no opposition, no abstentions.
And we're back on time.
Right on the money. Alright, number six. Uh, Board of Commissioners to authorize acceptance of grant funds. Through the lead and copper service line grant, the local source water protection grant and the PFAS remediation grant. Public hearings to follow after governor count, governor and council approval. Okay, so this is.
So this, we apply for grants and before it can go to governor and council, they need authorization form sign. It's just saying that you understand it's going to govern a council that you're. Cause we apply for grants. I, you know, I, but if there's not approved by D P S, they don't go anywhere. So. These all were approved by D E S for. Um, like the lead service line grant. Be up to fifty thousand dollars. It already be eighteen of that prior to them offering this. Um, so we just. Need sign up on that, get up to fifty thousand. Source water protection grant is the one that Jimmy was talking about for twenty five grand. And then. Mainline extension grant is the two one and a half million dollar grants. For two project areas.
Right. So the first one here, fifty thousand, that doesn't have a matching. Number for M V D on it? And what did you say? We already spent eighteen thousand?
Prior to them offering this grant, we spent eighteen thousand dollars for the first year with one twenty water to start the lead service lines. Each project that.
So is that possibly re get reimbursed out of this?
Federal money.
Oh, alright, okay.
Just whatever we get here forward, moving to build that.
We're going to use all that fifty thousand? Alright.
So we need to have three motions or can we move all three in one?
Um, you can refer to the most, they should all be separate because it's going to go. Kind of, um.
Okay.
For each the authorization forms leave your signature on them. It's one for each one of the grants. Yeah, as chairman, you're just saying that.
Alright, I'll do that. Okay. Yeah.
I'll make a motion on accepting the lead and copper service line grant.
What you want to.
With the wording that's on the proposal here. Uh, do you want me to read that into record? I can do that. I move that the Board of Commissioners of the Merrick Village District vote to accept the lead and copper service. Line grant in the amount of up to fifty thousand US dollars. For the required lead and copper service line project, should it become available with governor and council approval? This motion will also be considered authorization for the superintendent Ron Minor to execute grant documents as necessary.
Second. Alright, motion by Wolf, second by Paul. Any comments, questions? If not, everybody in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alright, so that's four zero zero, no oppositions, no extensions. Their motion on the second grant. I move that the Board of Commissioners of the Merrick Village District vote to accept the source water protection grant in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars with the M V D match of twenty thousand dollars. For the continuation of the salt reduction slash mitigation efforts project, should it become available with the governor and council approval? This motion will also be considered authorization for the superintendent Ronald Minor to execute grant comments, documents as necessary. Alright, that's a motion by Paul, second by John. Any questions, comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alright, so that's four zero zero in favor, no abstentions, no oppositions. I hear a motion on the PFAS remediation grant.
So it's my turn, huh? I moved that the Board of Commissioners of the Merrick Village District vote to accept the PFAS remediation grant for two projects in the amount of one point five million each. For each project for the mainline extension project for homes affected by PFAS contamination of private wells. Should become available with the governor and council approval, this motion will also be considered authorization for superintendent Ron Minor to execute grant documents as necessary.
Great, motion by John, second by Paul. Any discretion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. John, how do you vote in favor?
Aye. Yep.
Right, four zero zero, no extensions, no oppositions. And that concludes the grants. On the agenda, correct? Alright, so we can move on to. Item number seven, Board of Commissioners review. Vote on the cost of living adjustment COLA. Of up to seven percent. Any discussion on that one?
This does not include merit increases, right? This is pure COLA.
And these, uh, this increase also. If I'm not mistaken, also gets increased. On the salary range too for each. On the salary range too for each. Position, right?
Bumps up the ceiling of it.
Right.
My understanding was in previous discussions. Seven percent had been um mentioned, but just to be clear, social security was eight point seven.
See eight, eight, seven, or eight, eight, five, or eight, seven, I don't remember now. No, I put it ice.
It was somewhere in the. Item mid eights.
Yeah. Uh, I guess. I, I think seven might, I don't know, kind of reconsidering, might be a little excessive, just. For the fact that on years where there is eight point seven, yeah. Just on years where there is a negative COLA. And it doesn't happen frequently, but it. It could happen now with the high inflation we've had in the last couple of years. It could be followed by something negative. And obviously, I wouldn't expect the staff to take a pay cut. So I'm almost thinking maybe not doing the whole eight in the. Under the premise that in years following, if there's a negative COLA that we wouldn't reduce. The wage.
Well, we can, we can speak for future boards. There might be new members coming on, right? So we can really say any.
And there, there has been years we have not received a COLA.
Right.
Right. And that's because it was probably a negative number, so it wasn't.
No, it was two percent to a fourth of the field.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there was a couple times when it was under, under three, but.
Yeah, I know. I remember, I know Michelle had a list of what, what it's been over the years, you know. Don't have that in front of me at all. I don't know if we have that, but. I, I don't know. I, I'd probably be more in favor of something in the range of five percent. Think that we did last, last year was, I believe last year was.
So you have. There's an average, uh, so the towns um. Amherst was seven, Auburn was seven point nine. Bosco and six, Bristol four, and so there's a whole range. No less, the average of all the towns that it's listed here was five point nine percent.
Town DPW type of, or water departments, or what?
So, you know, that I don't know, but it's, I, I'm thinking it's. I don't know if it's, if it's water power or town or not. But, uh, you know, Bennington, Bosworth, Bristol, Conway, Dublin, Francis Town. Fremont, Grantham, Hampton Falls, Jeffrey, Kingston Line, Boston, Hampton, Springfield, Tamworth. Walpole.
What is that you're reading? Is that something that um? Compiled or um?
It was either Michelle or Kristen, but they compiled it just to kind of see what some other towns were doing. And uh, so with all those towns listed, and, and it, and again, a range from like, I think the high is eight point seven. To a low of four, uh, sorry, three percent in Boston. The average came out to uh five point nine percent, five point nine.
Do you know what the town did? Like?
Yeah, actually, I think I s- I uh got an email from Paul McCally and he said it was three. And they don't do merit raises over there. They don't. Which is surprising, but.
Ever or just this year?
It's something that's negotiated with the uh.
In the interest of keeping this short, um, and in the interest of, you know. I think we all know that something has to give on either end, right? So um. The statistics call for over eight percent, right? Or, and, and, and I think. We also have to be careful that we're not feeding that whole inflation frenzy by, by everybody just basically following the numbers as they are. So in the interest of keeping this short, I'm gonna propose six percent. So I would make a motion um as a proposal, I would make a motion to accept the cost of living increase of uh six percent. Which also has impact on the uh salary ranges, right, um, as well, so not just the actual compensation.
Yeah. A motion made by Wolf. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, second by John. Any other comments, discussion?
I'm, I might wanna make that comment that, you know, we played that ball earlier back to you guys to management and staff, right? As far as the other questions with holidays and number of holidays and so on. I guess the message that I would like to have. Understood, at least as far as me personally goes, is I think six percent is more than I, some of the businesses are doing out there. It's certainly not the seven or eight percent that people are hoping for, but I think it's still a signal that, that the board is recognizing the situation. I'm willing to do something about that. And, and maybe that also leads to understanding that something has to give, right? For example, forty days of holidays a year, that may or may not be what, what we see in the industry out there, right? So, I guess that's, that's my comment why I'm making that motion. So six percent is on the table, uh, I think it got second, right? So John second.
So I guess if there's no other comments, then we can call a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes four, zero, zero, no extensions, no oppositions. Six percent. All right, uh, moving on, your number eight. So we got the two sets of minutes, I believe.
Uh, isn't this the timeline to review minutes?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Hey, can we do the minutes first as if that's the only thing we got a vote on? I gotta get going.
Can we? Because I think there's always somebody missing, right?
Um, you know. Yeah, I think Kerry said it can be voted on by anybody at the meeting. It doesn't have to be the people that.
We're at the meeting. Town does, you don't have to. I mean, it's more of a courtesy. You don't vote on minutes, you're not.
It's been called it like that for years now. I, I mean, I wouldn't.
But this thing is, we're gonna have like five sets of minutes. So. Yeah, how long do we wanna keep kicking these down the road, you know? I mean, we only got two, right? Right now, I guess. Um, yeah. Whatever you guys want. You wanna table them for another um session.
I don't wanna vote on minutes that I didn't go to the meeting for.
Yeah, I kind of.
All right, if that's how you feel, like, I can understand that. So that's the fact, though, is uh we don't, yeah, Ken's not here for this one.
Well, can we maybe schedule a five minute phone call? To get these approved?
I don't know if you would have to be.
I just put it off for the next.
Well, it's funny because we approved uh accounts payable and payroll by email, but we can't approve this email.
Wow, that's a good point. Yeah, I didn't think of that.
Let's put on the action items and talk about it some more.
All right, so that was, that was the um, the minutes were actually item number. Uh, twelve.
So we're gonna table it.
So we table the minutes. Let's go back to, we were gonna discuss the timeline to review the minutes. And if John, if you need to bow out anything, just.
Yeah, I'm gonna let you guys go ahead and do that. I got a call I gotta make, so um, I appreciate your understanding.
No problem. We still got a quorum, so we're good. Thanks for joining.
Thank you, John.
Good night, guys.
Like a record show, eight PM, John Lyons left the meeting. Uh, all right, so this uh discussed the timeline to review the minutes and I did see here that there's um. What does this thing say? This should be. Minutes must be made available for public inspection within five business days after the meeting. Except in the case of non-public session meeting minutes, okay? So. What does this mean that we need to get that turnaround in five days and at least get it up as draft?
Yes, so apparently um having the video, Kerry, Kerry being back. I ordered with her and she said that in, in the RSA doesn't recognize video yet.
Does not recognize video. Which is funny because that's not what we heard before from legal, not, not from her, but from other legal.
Reg, I think. I think he said that.
So she's going strictly by the RSA, so there's gonna be three minutes within five days.
But they ha- don't have to be in the final version. They can be in the draft first draft.
Right. So I guess when I think about this, our meetings are usually on a Monday. Five days would be.
Five business days.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
They would need to be made public by Monday.
Friday.
Well, Friday would be four.
Friday would be four.
Five, five would be. Cause Saturday, Sunday is not. Five business days, I'm thinking.
Yeah, not calendar.
They need, they need to be in draft form within a week.
So can we say this? I know I like to look at them ahead of time. It saves, it saves making corrections and those corrections have to be in for the minutes, just. So I usually do my work over the weekend by MBD stuff, so if we have a meeting on Monday. If we can get minutes circulated out. For the next weekend, maybe by Friday.
Right.
Kind of up to Amanda if she can, if she can make that happen or not.
I rely heavily on those weekends.
Oh, you do too. Yeah, see, that makes sense. All right.
They have five business days to be completed, so. I, I know that these are your guidelines, but five business days to be completed gives me Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday.
Yeah, so you, if you get them done by Monday and just put them out the way they are. And then, once you're gonna make them available on, on that Monday. Just send them out to us and we'll make edits ourselves and we'll just impose those edits.
But they must be posted by Monday.
I know.
In draft.
So post them Monday.
Do they need to be posted? Or do they need to be available upon request?
Available upon request.
Oh, is it? Okay. So then we don't need to post them then necessarily.
Okay.
So we don't really have to change anything that different than what we're doing, except having them available in five days. Okay.
Yes.
Right. So that just means that your weekend after a meeting is gonna have to be spent doing the minutes, unfortunately, but. Um.
Until state RSAs can catch up.
That's probably what. Yeah, it's probably what you were doing mostly, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I devote primarily the weekend to them.
Okay.
So as long as they're available on Monday, then that's fine.
Yeah.
And when you, when you have them on Monday. And just forward them to us at that point. And we'll have them in plenty of time before the next meeting when we go over corrections and stuff. I can still make edits and get them to you. So the ones that go in our packet. They can still be amended after they're presented in five days, right? They can still be.
Oh, yeah, you can, we. amended on time.
Seven, four minutes. I mean, uh, you guys, two years, you know, whatever you.
Whatever edits, yeah.
Back to me. If, if somebody asks for them in the meantime, I've got them. If, if they are.
Yeah.
If they have a pack, I'll make the edit. Then I'll offer them, then if somebody asks for this, they're advised.
Okay, because with the town, we, we edit them at the meetings.
Right. But it just takes.
It's just, no one really has it yet. It's because no one wants to have edits, it's already kind of been made. Word changes ahead of time, so it makes it flow easier, you know, when it comes to the meeting, so.
Are we certain that they don't have to be posted? They only have to be available upon request?
Must be made available for public inspection within five business days. So Kerry must have interpreted that as meaning.
Well, this is not RSA language. This is a comment made by whoever wrote that website that I forwarded at the time.
Oh, this is you. All right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is that screenshot that I forward, forward when we had to.
Strictly going by the RSA.
But you said that she's, the way she worded it was it just has, we just need to make it available upon request type of thing. Okay.
That's good.
Yeah, I, I thought it had to post it somewhere. That's not the case. That's a lot easier.
I also wanted to point out, just um, I don't know if you all know this, but Amanda spends anywhere from twelve to fourteen hours doing the minutes. So it's not, it's not.
No, no.
Yeah, so that's gonna take a lot of that next weekend. Well, I guess as long as they're available, some, some fashion or if someone asks for them, we can get them available as pos- as quick as possible. I don't know what else to do.
Amanda's getting paid by the hour, right? Not, not a fixed, a lot better, I think.
Amanda, do you usually use like the video in order to help you do these or you just taking notes? How do you normally, um, what do you do? What do you use?
Um, I actually record the meetings myself. And then I use um speech exec and upload the recordings that way. And then from there, I listen to them with a headset, with a set of headphones and go through them.
Tell me you listen to this meeting.
I know, I was.
Actually, a lot of rewinding too, because like, I, there's a lot of times that I have to quote something. Um, or get exact, uh, yeah, so if you rewind, I listen to it probably four times through.
Oh, my God.
At the end of the day.
Well, you do a terrific job. I, I will say.
Don't say too much more. She's gonna have to listen to it again, so.
That's gonna be in the minutes. You do a terrific job.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, let's make that statement, you know, as a board, for sure.
I didn't realize it was that encompassing, so.
Well, they should just let you, just look at the video.
I, I apologize for asking them and, and more advanced than, than I have been, so.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So to wrap this up, is this something that? We wanna put into a policy and maybe ask Steph to put a quick policy together? Or, 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 you know.
I think the RSA.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, the RSA was valid for the last couple of years too, and we haven't necessarily, you know. Followed that policy, I mean, or the, the, so, I mean, I, I'm okay with, if we're saying today that from here on out. Um, five business days after each meeting, we have a draft circulated to the board. If that's, if that's okay with everybody, I'm fine with that too. But this is also then a, an expectation that is firm, right? And if it's, if it's not possible because somebody's sick or, you know, somebody's child is sick or something, you know, then, then let's communicate about it, but. Let's, let's also commit to, to be transparent about it, then, right?
All right, so that would be the goal, and if it can't happen for a certain reason, then just let us know about it, that's all.
Right.
There, there's also an exception to that. If, if it couldn't happen for a reason. Um, they can, an action report can be done, which includes all of the motions taken. Uh, which kind of gets around in the event of an emergency that. Anyone could do, say, heaven forbid, one of, somebody lands in a hospital or something, but.
Yeah.
It is a quick, easy. Legal RSA. Approved. Way around that.
And we, we. We do have the extra statement here that, except in the case of non-public session meeting minutes, which must be made available within seventy two hours. Now, we usually seal those, right? Because there's a reason why they're non-public.
Yeah, unless the board has voted.
Um, and I'm assuming in that case, do we need to have minutes then at all? Yes, because still a meeting, right?
Still have to seal them.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
All right, so we're good. On to, uh, where are we here? Where are the uh? Number nine and ten. Uh, number nine, Board, Board of Commissioners to discuss draft plan review policy. I do see where Ron presented us with this. Plan review. So the, looking at the bullets here, and the one, if irrigation demands are not supplied for review, irrigation is not to be allowed in excess of design average domestic demands. I think, I think the irrigation is where we were kind of going at with this policy, right?
Peak demands.
So um. I guess it's, we're basically saying if a developer comes in. I guess we're basically saying if a developer comes in, presents us with their water request. They need to include. Irrigation in their demand. Uh, and that's gonna be basically covered in their, um. In their demand request. All existing demands as well as planned demands, projects that are approved for construction will be factored into the plan review process to determine water availability. Is that, is that on a site-specific basis?
So I don't know, I, I wrote it, I wrote that out, I'm, I didn't know if those would be. So basically, that's, that's the piece that. Other developments have come forward, and they've kind of allotted, we've already given, you know, done reviews and said, you know. Okay to certain volume to them, that needs to be factored in. As going forward for any new, um, applicants as well, so we're taking that, even though it's, we're not supplying that yet. But that needs to be accounted for, because we already promised that.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. Does that include, uh, like a multi-year project? Like, say it's got a, a three-year project that's phased in three phases every year, and someone comes in. We allocating the three years upfront?
It should, if, if that's the way we reviewed it, then yes.
Okay.
And that's usually how reviews go, no matter if it's phased or not, you're looking at the entirety of the project. Unless they come with a amended, uh, an amended plan.
Yes, so, so when we did, when we reviewed the like, for example, the, the premium outlets, that was all done correct. In one big loan.
Does that include the slate site and all that too?
Yes, everything, right. We're gonna actually, they're actually going to the planning board to have, um. So now change, I think from. They get.
Yes.
Okay. So that was something we were gonna look at, because they're getting close to that whole site, sites allotment, so that was something we were gonna ask for. Re-review.
Now, they, they come back and played the little game where they say, well, you allocated all of this for this phase, and we're only using half of it, so. Can we make up that difference over here and make our building program bigger? I, I don't like that concept.
So I, I did.
It's in the bank, it's in the bank, you don't exchange it, you know, but I don't know what, I don't know if this policy. Talks about that.
My, as, as far as the mall went, they made changes before. I didn't think it was necessary to re-review, as long as they fit into what the original allotment, you know, they were, they were said, they were gonna use this. Whatever changes you make, it's still, if it's still.
Still looking at that site as a whole.
I was for that, for the mall, right?
But I'm, what I'm asking is if they say, well, in this part of the site, you allocated this, we're only using half, so now that means we can build more over here. I don't, I don't buy that, because I think, I think this is going against what we're trying to do, is to keep. That extra water reserved, because they may actually use it if. They wanna go and start irrigating or something like that, you know, and.
Well, my, my look was they weren't gonna get any more. So they use up their allotment, and they still have to build, you know, they wanna come in with three, phase three of the mall. Sorry about your luck, I mean, it's all used up down there.
Yeah, yeah. And if they want more allocation, then they gotta pay more for it too, because it's more than what they paid for that we initially allocated. We may, if we have water to give them, has to be beyond what they initially requested. I just, um, I think it's, it's a tactic that a lot of developers use, I see it in Massachusetts as well, where. Because no one, a lot of times you don't use the water that you're allocated, but. The water that you're allocated is greater, because there's gonna be a safety factor built in there, you know? So I, I just, I don't know what our policy is on sites that say. Oh, well, we're not using all our water in phase one, we got an extra thirty thousand gallons we don't use, so. We're gonna make a bigger development in phase two and use up that thirty thousand gallons over here, you know, I, I don't.
We could certainly add that in, I know.
I don't know.
I don't wanna name drop, but we, that's something that we looked at when we were, we had our meeting, and we were going over how, uh. We were doing plan reviews, when we had our work session. It basically was. We need numbers.
Yeah, there, there was a developer here saying exactly that to us, we're only using this on this site, on this phase, so we got extra, let's use it over here.
Make it for over here.
Right, you know, and. I just, I don't know if that, I, look at the site as a whole and what was allocated to begin with.
So maybe the, maybe the mall is, was a bad example, because they paid all their entrance fees and everything all upfront, that was all paid. So they were, they, you know.
Right, right.
There was another contractor was.
I mean, what you're saying is, I'm not sure if that's something that's. You know, that we, that really, that we can stand on, because I'm assuming we're talking about properties, right? When, when, when a developer comes to us, they're talking about us, about us a project concerning a property, right? I'm assuming, based on what I'm seeing in the planning board, and. On that property, within that project that they plan, we allocate a certain amount of water that they can use, right? And they pay for that, as far as the system development charge. Now, if that property and that project is phased ours out, right, into, into, is, is.
Yeah, so for numbers wise, let's say they come for the whole project, they're asking for a hundred thousand gallons.
Right, right.
Okay.
And that's what they can get for that property, right?
Yeah.
Basically, so if for some reason they decide, okay, we're gonna shift some, 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 some build out around, and the first part is gonna be basically. Just some shopping with very little water consumption.
Right.
Right, but now, in, in phase three, they wanna build apartments, and they're using, you know, eighty percent of those hundred thousand gallons a day. I'm not sure if we can push against that.
No, but the, what they're doing is they're saying, they, they get the whole mixed-use project for a hundred thousand, just for rough numbers. They build phase one of it, that allocation percentage for phase one, let's say was thirty thousand, but they're only using fifteen thousand. So now they're saying, oh, well, now we can get rid of the office building and put more residential in, which is a higher use. But we're okay, because we got the extra fifteen thousand over here that we're not using over there, so when you do the whole allocation now. You're probably at a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Well, that's, that, that's what I'm saying, no, 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 we should not be able to, we should be able to push back on that.
That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Right, yeah, but I don't think we can push back to the hundred thousand that we allocated to the overall property. And the sum of that, of all projects presented at the time, right? I don't see how we can push back on that, because we committed to that.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
I'm not talking about reducing that, no, if I may, mis- misrepresented, I definitely didn't mean that. So what, I guess what I'm looking at is, we should always be looking at the total allocation of.
Correct, right, and it's really going by the property, at the end, right?
Yeah, whichever they applied for, wh- whatever the boundary of.
The only issue that we might have is, what if somebody is subdividing a property later on? Are they coming back and want additional water for that subdivision later? So we might have to think about that.
You mean like a lot division?
Yeah.
Uh, well, they should be coming in for the whole lot, the whole subdivision, with or without irrigation.
Yeah, but think about it, somebody buys, you know, a hundred acres and builds one house on it, right? It's allocated one house worth of water, right? So now fifteen years later, or maybe fifty years later, the family that inherits all the property wants to subdivide it. Now they can't get water for the other ninety-nine, whatever, I was just saying.
They gotta come to us.
Yeah.
Right.
They would have to come.
It would go through the planning board approval, and start at the beginning.
Okay, okay.
Process.
That's true, right.
Yeah, nothing would lock them in.
Right.
They, they're welcome to do a new venture anytime, come to us and see if they get an allocation for it.
There's one thing that I don't see here, and maybe that's a part of the last, a second to the last bullets. Um, the empty water system model will be used to simulate the impact of a proposed development on the existing water distribution system. Uh, we had cases, for example, you know, with some of the recent developments where we required the developer to add an additional, you know. Section of piping to close the loop, right? So we don't have any.
Hydraulics.
Yeah, and to not have it at end, for example, right, and standing.
Certainly add on to that, because that's.
Well, it might already be there, and it might have been your intent, and if that's the case, and you're satisfied with it, then I'm satisfied with it.
But, um.
Was the intent of that line.
Okay.
To justify, if we say, you know, because of this development, you need. Alleviate this dead end, or, or, or may not, line extension.
Yeah.
But that was what that was in there for, but I could actually, I can clarify it.
No, I, I think the only thing that's missing here is possibly like a, like a comma, and you know, if there's an impact, uh, you know, the MBD reserves the right to, you know, to, to require that. You know, um, that modification to the plans, um, you know, at the cost of the, of the, of the, uh.
So in other words, if, if the model doesn't match reality.
Well, no, what I'm.
Something like that.
Well, what I'm saying is, if the model indicates that some corrective action needs to be taken, that corrective action is at the expense of the applicant. Right, that's, that's what I'm trying to say. So here it only says that the.
You'll do a model.
The model, the system will be used to simulate the impact, but it doesn't say what happens when any impact is being.
No, that's a good point, right?
Yeah.
Is being, is being discovered, right? Who's, who's responsible to respond to that impact? Right.
Might wanna add something that says the, uh, mitigation for that impact shall be at the expense of the applicant.
Some fight.
The applicant, or something like that, right?
So, and I think the last paragraph is accepted, not accepted.
Did I mess that up?
The last full item, uh, when the review is completed and accepted.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got a problem?
Yep.
So, the whole thing we just talked about before, about the, um, allocation, not, the, the, the. The project's entire allocation. Uh, shall not be. Increased based on usage. You know, we were just talking about, should that be part, should that be in here too? This, is that where this belongs? So in other words, the, a project's approved allocation shall not be. Um, in, I don't know how I'm trying to word this, but.
Any changes from the original approved appropriation needs to come back for re-review or something to that effect?
Yep.
Yeah, and it's just something to say that, um. Comparison to the project's approved allocation shall be based on. That allocation and not on actual reduction in demand or something, I'm, I'm trying to, I don't know how to word it, but. Um, I, I guess the only other, the way to say it is that. The project's approved allocation is based on its allocation and not necessarily its actual water use. I'm trying to prevent what, and I'm not saying that this has happened, I don't really know if it has or not, I know. It was discussed that one project originally with a developer in front of us, maybe a year, six months ago.
Yeah.
Where there was claims, you know, oh, we're, we're only using half of the water, so.
See though. We base that off their numbers that they supplied us, so that, you know, they need to come in with.
Updated, refreshed.
If it is. Realistic numbers, you know.
Okay.
So the next project needs to go, well, no, we don't, we don't roll that forward, you need to come through with.
So just say, any change in allocation needs to be approved by MBD.
Yeah.
Any change in approved allocation.
Not just allocation, you know, on the, on the, uh.
And, uh.
On, on the approved, uh.
Calculated demand or something.
Yeah, or approved demand, really, on the approved demand. Because it has been, at that point, it has been approved, right? Now they wanna come back and change it, so it needs to be reviewed again, so.
Alright.
And I have one more when you're ready.
Writing down enough that I should.
Yeah, take your time. Uh, what I don't see here is, um, commercial, um, applications, this is very focused on residential, language-wise. Uh, so for example, an in-house review will be done, anything over seventeen units will be sent to our engineers for a third-party review. Um, we should probably say over seventeen residential units, right? But also, what if, uh, a steel mill wants to come to town and needs, you know, a hundred. Billion gallons of water a day, right, I mean. Um, that's not really covered in that, it's not mentioned in that policy, what, how do we respond to a commercial, um, applicant?
Yeah, I don't know, square footage or something, or.
Well, they would, I guess, would still go for the same.
Right, but it should mention that.
Yeah.
Case, right, right now, this is very focused on residential, uh, projects. Um, but really, the same policy should be applying in some shape or form. To a commercial applicant, so it needs to be listed here, you know. Right now, it's a little bit ex- exclusive of, of commercial applicants altogether.
Yeah.
Which means it's undefined, which means if they come our way and request something, we have nothing to stand on, right?
Yeah, I don't know, you wanna base it on a gallons per day request or something?
I'm not sure if we should request, we, I mean, if a commercial.
Withdrawal, what are you asking for, you know?
Right, but what are we telling a commercial developer that wants to, or a commercial applicant that wants to come to town and build a business, right? Are we telling them flat out, no, just because they're, they're exceeding a certain level? Um, I'm not sure if that's realistic.
Saying that needs to be reviewed.
Right, exactly, right, that's why I'm not sure if I would wanna put numbers in here for commercial developer, uh, give a commercial, commercial applicant.
Might be, would be reviewed the same way, uh, other than. So, obviously, we would need to mention commercial development as, as well, but it would be, it would be subject to. Man, you're, you know, if there's any irrigation, and you know, all.
Right.
All of that, they'd be still subject to that, still gonna be running the model. Um, if we're gonna come up with some sort of a. Allocation form as well, so I can work that in.
Might wanna consider just getting the seventeen units out of there and say anything over. Five thousand gallons a day, or pick a number or something.
That's, that's.
You know.
Do that, it.
I don't know, what, what you think about it, whatever you think.
It was one of those, what we. It was just a number that David and I, it was a smaller, uh, subdivision that came in. Doesn't give off for review, so it was, that's where kind of that number came in.
Seventeen units, seventeen three-bedroom units. Would be, uh, like seventy-six hundred gallons a day, three bedrooms. New Hampshire is a hundred and fifty gallons per day per bedroom. So four fifty times seventeen. So maybe something over, you know, I don't know, five thousand, if you wanna, I'll leave it up to you, I don't know what you. You know, the, the larger allocations seem like they merit, um. Engineer, third-party review, you know what I mean?
Right.
So I don't know where you wanna make that cutoff, wherever you feel comfortable.
Actually, that may cover us. As far as. Third-party review for commercials as well, if we go the way.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a good point.
You could say seventeen units or greater than five thousand gallons a day or something to you, I mean. Whatever you think, you can, uh. Add to it and then, uh, let us know what you come up with. Alright, uh, any other comments on that item? Uh, so that goes, the next thing on the agenda was number ten, I think here, right, the, uh, variable frequency drive. We, we don't have that, right?
Really don't have anything on that, I was really kinda just putting some information together, just trying to grab something, but then. I know we talked at other meetings, I don't even know if we. We need one, or, um.
I'm not sure if it was so much of a policy request, I, I think that was my request, and.
Yeah.
I think the point was that.
Have a plan, right?
Um, at the time, it wasn't necessarily clear who knew how and when and in what shape or form. Um, we can bypass a VFD, right? Can we do it at all? And if so, who knows how to do it?
So.
Peter did talk about that a little bit.
It was more of a work instruction than a, than a, than a policy, right?
I don't know if it was the last meeting or the one before, but Peter did talk about that.
He probably has a cold one sitting next to his computer.
Just pops in.
I wish I did, I have a cold glass of water.
Oh, yeah, right. So.
Give us the skinny on the VFD bypass.
VFD, so yeah, at the um. At the uh four, five and two-nine treatment plan, your VFDs do have a a soft start bypass on those. And I know um Brian was, you know, um. You know, questioning how to, you know, how to work those, because they did have training on those at four, five. So now that we're gonna have training, we we're gonna have that probably later this month on the VFDs. So then he can, you know, sort of see what it is at. You know, and and all the rest of the workers, they can kind of see what that bypass is and go, okay, now I got it and sort of. So you have it on both of those, but the um. The well seven, eight, you, the VFDs are not set up with a soft start bypass. And I got, I started looking through the uh. The drawings and the specs, and I did not see anything, but I I I still need to look a little bit more to verify that. But I believe you do not have that there.
So we have it at four and five, but you don't think we have it at seven and eight? Is that what you said?
Yeah, and you have it at two, and you have it at two-nine.
So what you were saying in the past, that when you do a soft start, it's gonna be on full throttle, but it ramps up slow. And then we just need to either valve back the flow rate.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's how you. Yeah, if you wanted to reduce the flow, yeah, you would have to throttle a valve to uh put some extra head pressure on there to push it back.
Yeah, like for instance, the wells two and nine are probably gonna want to run at twelve fifty, but the vessels are only good for. Well, two thousand, so if you got two wells going, it's gonna, you know, you're gonna be at twenty-five hundred, so you'd have to back those down.
Right, yeah, yeah.
All of all a soft start does, it 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 prevents the inrush, the current inrush, that's all it does. So it's not even the slowest start. It's just, it's just basically creates artificial resistance for a short period of time. Let's split seconds really, or you know, a second or two. And once the once the once the motor comes up to even a third or an eighth of the speed, of the normal speed, that's the end of it.
Actually, they, this one does ramp up. You can do it like up to a minute as a ramp up speed.
But the VFDs are good, that you can throttle the flow rate. When you do, when you bypass the VFD, you go to soft start, it's it's a hundred percent on. So you have to back off a valve to reduce the rate.
Yeah, and I believe the uh another double check on this too, but on the upgrade that we did to the seven, eight plan, we put new VFDs in. At the wells, not at the treatment plant, but at the well seven and. I believe those are, have a bypass soft start on it, but I'd have to double check. But I I I know you're uh, I'm pretty sure that your high lift pumps and your backwash pumps at the treatment plant, the ones that were installed. During the two thousand sixteen construction do not have that.
So if we lost the VFD on the booster pumps at well seven and eight. Well, the pumps that pump out of the clear well.
Oh, yeah, the high lift pumps, yeah.
So if we've lost the VFD on that one, they don't have the soft start capacity. So that's where we would have to figure out. We, you were concerned about if we ran them. Too strong, it would put a shock wave into the.
Yeah, and then so I'm not even sure if they even have an across the, so the other, the old other starters and across the line starter, and that's where it just goes boom, and it just. It's on, you know, hundred percent right at second one, you know, but um. You do have two pumps over there, so if you lose a VFD, then you have the second pump that, you know, will have to be working. Instead of alternating. It would be on, that would be called all the time. So you do have the, you know. You know, you have two pumps here, and that's, you know, that's one of the reasons why you had that blue duplicity there. So if you lose something, you you have it, and you have two backwash pumps too. So you do have that if you do lose one, but then if you. If something happens to that pump or the other VFD, then yeah, then you're.
The 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 chances of both pumps going down is a lot less chance than one pump going down, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can't believe that it's gonna be a lot of, like a like a big investment to run a bypass.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not sure if you have cabinet space for it there. Your your VFD cabinets. Are, so if you look at the size of your VFD cabinet like Ron, you know, how you, how big your BFD cabinets are. At seven, eight for your high lift pumps. But you, and you look at the VFD cabinets and granted, you know, they're bigger at, you know, bigger capacity at uh. Wells two-nine, but even if you look at the ones at four, five, you know, your BFD cabinet is a lot bigger, so you have to have. You know, some room in that cabinet for, so I don't know what you can do. Can you set up a bypass next to it? I'm not really sure.
You could do an auxiliary auxiliary panel, a second panel, a second cabinet next to it, but you have to, of course, run conduit and an outlet, right? That should, that should be possible. I mean, I'm not saying it's gonna be.
I don't know if we can actually, I I to Brian's point was. If you have a bypass, you would, it would have to be done manually as far as, like, like you're saying is, like, closing a valve. Open the valve, because you're gonna drain that clear that I. The VFD to ramp up and down. Clear well out, so.
That's a good point.
Having the two pumps was the. The backup, I guess, in where it's like. For the low lift pump or the the well seven or well eight motor, you have the soft start as the backup if the one should fail.
Right, so if those if those fail on the wells, we can do the soft start. But if they fail on the high lift pumps. We have hopefully it's just one that fails and not both, right?
Controls, and I don't know exactly how the controls work, but you do have controls in your clear well, so if the um. Clear well did get drained down, you get to a certain level, and then it's gonna kick off the high lift. At least I know, I don't know how it was set up. I know like um when Saudi does it, you have a low level and you get an alarm, it'll kick off. The uh the pump, and then there's a low, low level, so if something happens, then it locks out the pump and won't let it start. But if it only gets to the low level and locks, you know, turns off your pump, once it gets back to a higher level, then it will kick back on again. So your pump could be cycling, you know, so um, you know, that's, you know, not ideal, but not the worst thing in the world, you know, so. If it did come on and and you had a little bit and you throttle a valve, but it doesn't really totally match your your input. It can go on and off, you know.
Okay, so I did talk to Brian today, Pete. We act, he was actually uh. A and D. Asked him again about, you know, any update on the VFD. For seven and eight. Apparently, it was gonna be another sixteen weeks out.
Oh, wow. How long ago was that ordered?
Yeah, I think it was June.
June, okay, I was gonna say this summer, yeah, wow.
What are we talking about?
We actually have a VFD that's down on at well seven and eight. So we're down to to the backup motor, right, or or to one of, just running one motor.
Which one, the well, one of the wells or one of the? Clear well, high lift pump.
Different vendor now. He can actually have, this is a couple thousand dollars more. For the VFD and he can have it, I I want to say tomorrow or this week sometime. So we're gonna go ahead and get that, but it was taking measurements inside that panel and it's gonna be close. We have the room, but it's gonna be like right there, so those cabinets are very small in.
So there actually is a VFD that is down on one of the high lift pumps, so we're only using the.
Yeah, it was June, we had a meeting, we actually shut them down so we could actually. Talk in there and and have a have a conversation. Brian went to fire backup, nothing. You know, this was so we immediately. Obviously, we're still running, because we have the ones, we need to order something right off and get that in there and. Again, he called and. Maybe another sixteen weeks, so I don't know what.
What is that, like a twenty, thirty thousand dollar item or what?
No, that was um. I got twelve in my mind, twelve thousand. Twelve or fifteen.
Makes sense to have like a backup. I mean, the thing is, you buy a backup and then the other one's gonna last ten years.
Problem with VFDs is you need to power them up, uh or at least apply electricity, you know, the, yeah, right, the capacitors, they fail if if you don't have it powered up once a year. So it's not impossible to have a spare, but you basically have to have like a pigtail and like a workbench kind of setup. That is, of course, an OSHA combined, you know, and an AC combined and everything, so you don't kill yourself. So, and those capacities are no joke either, right, so.
Well, back down to what we started talking about, we just need to make sure there's some written SOPs or work constructions, or wherever you want to call them, so it's not just Brian that knows how. Yeah, exactly, that's the same thing, yeah, we don't, we don't need, I don't know how to do it, but.
Pete, in the O and M manuals for four and five and in uh. One nine, is it gonna have a step? There's gonna be walking through the.
Yeah, we all will have a, we have a video, so we'll have a, you know, a video of it uh of it too, but. Yeah, so that they have. They they do have their individual ONMs, which should show, you know, should step you through that type of thing. Yeah, we can double check on that, though.
Maybe you can even if, maybe you can have even have like the, you know, the a chee-chee laminated hanging on the VFD.
I, I mean, I know Brian.
As long as all the safety, you know, relevant information is on there as well.
All right. All right, thanks, Peter. Glad you were still chiming in there. We're uh, we tabled the minutes. We're moving on number twelve, action items. See if we can bang these out. Where are we here? Hey, action item number two. That needs to be redated, that last column, um. This is an ongoing thing, is it uh? Quarterly. So these, were these provided um? In this meeting? Uh what is this here?
It's actually at the end, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. All right, so Amanda, just change item number two, that from January to uh. April, that would be, I guess, next quarter. Number twenty-three, the results of PFAS sample points through the distribution system. That is in this packet too. All right, so if they're available next month, then. All right, so change that to February for now, number two, I guess, right? Twenty-three, yeah, number twenty-three. Um are we sampling at the um Penechak interconnect anymore? Is that in there?
We, we have been, but I I think we're gonna, we're not running into the system.
Oh, that's right.
So I, maybe we just use it.
Oh, that's.
When we're sampling, when we're running. I would sample. I mean, I, I mean, we could fire it up, but I don't, it's.
Yeah, I don't know. The only reason I was asking is I'd like, people are gonna want to know on the wholesale agreement. What, what, what we're seeing for PFAS, PFBA, PFOA.
So definitely when we're running it, when that is running. You know, constantly, it it will absolutely be sampled.
All right, so I guess we'll just look back on whatever it was the last time we got a sample there or something, right? That's that's the best we can do. You know, the other thing too is, there used to be data on the D E S website for Penechak's core system. So we could pull that if it's still being populated there.
I thought Penechak has actually that. Data on their website. I I remember looking at that, actually. I think they have sampling information on that one.
And it's like different, different places, but I think the core system is what feeds us, so if we look at those numbers. All right, that's good. It will save the money and not have to sample and pay for the water, the waste or anything too, I agree. All right, uh number forty, MVD open house, um. Able until spring twenty twenty-three.
What with the construction delays, we should probably table it till summer, right? We're not really gonna be done until. Early summer.
Maybe. I guess we can revisit it in spring and see if we need to pick it down.
Yeah, we can leave it in for spring for now, yeah.
Uh ongoing, number forty-three, ongoing salt committee meetings. I know that's just ongoing, it's just a placeholder. I think with the discussion we had with with Jamie involved and everything, that that's. Part of that. I think we just leave it the way it is. I'm okay with that. Um number forty-six, a future event policy, looks like we push that off till April.
Yeah, because Kerry wasn't available, but she's now, so we can actually bring that in if we want to.
How's Carrie's plate these days? Pretty full with everything or um? Want to maybe just send her a reminder that when she has time to. Get back on that one. You know, we're thinking maybe in April, if she can do something earlier.
I think she has everything she needed from me that I had, you know, there was a couple of emails where I put out a draft and not a draft, but like an outline of what what we were looking for. And then she can take it from there, really, so. And she's welcome to reach out to me if need be, what the purpose of that was.
All right, number forty-seven, review SDC calculation metrics to include escalation due to irrigation, cost of service. We pushed this off till June of twenty twenty-three, a work session. Uh that's the same with number forty-nine, with the corrosion control. I think number forty-nine was, by that time, all of our wells are gonna be online, and we'll see if there's any improvements to the corrosion situation. Uh number fifty-five. Like, we just went over this today, basically.
We're actually waiting for proposal from from. Management, really.
So we didn't really close that out, so we'll keep that on there.
But we could change the last sentence to, you know, waiting for proposals from management.
Right. You want, you want to just change that till the next month for now? Put a time on it?
But I would like to have that changed, that we're actually waiting for a proposal from management.
So uh number fifty-five, Amanda, you you can change that to say um. Waiting for proposal from MBD management. Maybe say February meeting. If we can have something by then. Fifty-six, calculate, uh create a policy fifty-six and fifty-seven, metrics for permitting based on peak consumption rather than average consumption. That's what this, we just went over this. Do you still have some modifications you want to make on that or?
Yeah, no, incorporate the changes we're talking and talking about.
So we'll leave, we'll leave that on there and say um.
Discuss update during February meeting.
Want to try and bring it back for February or? We're gonna have a full meeting.
February is gonna be a busy meeting, because we're gonna have the public hearing as well, so.
Well, no, uh are we? Yeah, we do both the same day, right?
So that's usually a, an adjourned and.
And that's scheduled for the little theater. So we just don't have it here, because we don't have capacity case.
Well, but I mean, this can be a three-minute agenda item, because we reviewed it today, there's very subtle changes you're gonna do. The only thing we have to do is we vote it in place.
Worst case, it can stay if we don't have time to table.
I mean, we just have to.
And if we don't do, we'll kick it off.
That's right. Yeah, but in reality, I mean, that thing was pretty complete. It was actually one of the things, so.
I agree.
A little bit of polishing that that can be reviewed in two minutes and we voted through and we done it.
Okay, so fifty-six, fifty-seven, we're just gonna say, uh discuss February meeting. Uh number fifty-eight. Uh mineral grass quarterly, that was uh due in February, right? So we can just leave that one alone. Everybody good with that?
Yeah, but February meeting is busy and this is a little bit more involved, right? Do we want to move that one out?
Uh updated mineral graphs. I don't know that we necessarily talk about them. We usually just have them in the in the POC packet. Maybe that's, that's all I was thinking. Yeah, okay. I don't think it needs to be agenda item. Um fifty-nine, valuation of proactive measures to track correlate customer water complaint. Oh, yeah, April, sorry. Number sixty. Uh we're just not hearing back anything. Uh, we're just not hearing back anything. You know, I can try them again. I did last time I tried them, I, it was a text and. I need the guy, a good email for him. I, I've been reaching out some texts and. He said he would send it over, he hasn't, so I can. Keep it on there. I mean, it's still, e- even though it's not in our, the ball's not in our court, you know, really. It's still something that I'd like to keep reminding us and keep pestering. Maybe he's gonna produce an NSF certificate at one of these points or something, you know? Um, okay, sixty-two.
I think that's taken.
Is that ready to be crossed off the list then?
I'd say so.
Alright. Uh, so number sixty-two, Amanda, I think we can retire that one. Today's date. Sixty-five, I don't, unless you have something in your um. There was anything really, other than the last meeting. Did additional flow tests and, and all of that and. Yeah. So are we just not gonna try to look inside there at some point? I mean, I. We talked about a camera when that, when the uh, people were here, but. Have you responded back to them? I did, I did, I, I gave the uh. All the flow data that we will test that we did and all of that, so I, so I answered his questions, he had. Submit us some questions, those were answered. Uh, the follow-up, we did the uh, additional flow tests throughout the neighborhood. That's all been forward to him as well. I. We did try looking in a hydrant. With the camera that I. You just can't see, so I mean, short of taking, you know, breaking the hydro down and looking in. I mean, we can do it, it just, we're getting real good. Yeah, there's no other reason to think that. Getting five thousand, was it, was it off top of my head, five thousand gallons a minute at twenty P S I, there's. Wow. There shouldn't be anything in that hydrant, it's. And you flow tested it a number of times now. Oh, it's be like, that was, would have been the third time, yeah.
Is twenty P S I a good number?
That's. Under fire. When you do fire flows at.
Okay. Cause I think my house is like in the sixty, sixty. Fifty-five, sixty, sixty P S I though. Why is, I don't know, how is it surprisingly high?
So we, that's what. But that's that, with no fires going on. So we, we, exactly, that's what the fire department would actually, could bring that water main down to with your truck.
Okay.
And supply water.
Okay.
That's what's available, that should, that's what, that's available at twenty P S I, for fighting a fire.
But the actual pressure was actually higher than twenty P S I.
Oh, yeah, I know, it was uh. Static pressure you're talking about.
Right, right.
Yeah, the stat. One hundred something gallons a minute, it was, I know it was in the minutes and stuff too.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we were getting out of the hire, so it's. Twenty is like the, the number that you try not to go below.
Right.
Right. You know, during a fire event, that's how, that's like the drama that. Stuff collapsing, water mains and stuff. Alright, so um, what number was that on here?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Can we retire that then? We're, we're not doing anything more on it, in, in the um. The, the public that was here has been. Notified. You responded to them. Responded everything and. Kind of. Let's say so, if they've got more questions, we can. Bring it up again, but. You guys are in favor, we'll um. Retire it. You wanna retire number sixty-five, Amanda, on today's meeting? Uh. Number sixty-six, investigate water conservation plans and grant eligibility for odd even irrigation policy. Or uh. I think that was my question, wasn't it about?
Yeah, it had to do with the planning board, uh, chairman best.
Oh, yeah.
Why we do that?
Yeah, the recommendation from the planning board to get rid of odd even. And we were looking for a response to that, just.
We're using it as. I believe you said that some.
Conservation restriction.
They require you to have some form of. Conservation, that's what we use.
Right.
Which I mean. I'm fine with.
Yeah, I think I'm.
Water lawn every day, you're doing it wrong anyways. I don't know what to tell you.
Right.
That's one of the reason, main reason why that thing is out there.
Right.
Correct.
So.
Well, and, and to revisit that, we also have to keep in mind, and that's something that actually somebody approached me the other day during, at the end of the planning board meeting. In fact, I was there last week, two weeks ago. Um, and somebody approached me about it, and I explained to them that for one, you shouldn't water your lawn every day because when you do that, you promote shallow root growth, which is. Makes it more susceptible to drought sensitivity anyway.
Mossy overgrowth in the topsoil too.
Right, right, exactly. The other one is, is simply that. Um, we have to. Set up the system, including PFAS mitigation and iron manganese mitigation. Um, it has to be. Uh, um. It has to be sized to peak domains. Not to average domains. Right? And we know that the peak demand is grossly driven by irrigation.
Correct.
And we know that in spring, when people are not caring all that much about the. Odd even watering schedule.
Would have just too much.
It, it's, it's quadrupling, right? It's not, it's not just doubling or tripling, it's quadrupling into the water demand, but. Peak demand.
If we're pushing our peak, so, without even.
Right.
Think about if we got rid of odd even.
That's right.
You go way over five million gallons.
Right.
Yeah.
And we can distinguish what water goes into our bodies versus what goes on grass. It all comes down to the same pipes.
So what I was gonna add to that is that, uh, this is part of our conservation measure. There's other things we could do, which I would not recommend, which we. Giving people credits to put in low-flow toilets and all these other things. This, I do some work in Massachusetts and some towns that over there, but. I don't wanna get into the plumbing business. You know what I mean? So. This is a good conservation tool that works good with. Good irrigation practice, and yeah, right. Right. So I guess in light of that, we uh, possibly can retire this number as well. I think I've got. I've got the answer I was looking for to respond. You know? What do you guys think?
I think in the minute, in the minutes I read earlier, that it's really that, that you were looking for, where does it say in the? In the grant um, stipulations that you have to have.
Um, oh, yeah, I didn't find it to conservation plan.
Conservation, you know, measures in place. I'm not sure if that's still of interest to you, but um, or to us.
I think I'm good with it, I don't know. I don't remember what, that, talk about that, like. How does, where does it say that it impacts our grant eligibility? It's just the fact that we need to have a conservation plan somewhere or something? To require. Another word. Grants, but I couldn't tell you which grants they were off the top of my head. Yeah. This is just good conservation. So I don't care, whatever, if you guys wanna keep it on or, or.
Well, in fact, the matter is, I, I almost would like to see, to see that list of uh, water companies in the area. That have similar. Uh. Or even conservation plans in place like we do. I, I wouldn't mind seeing that posted on the website. If it's still up to date. But if I'm not, if I remember right, you had like. It was dozens. You had dozens, right, of, of, of. New England, uh.
I'd have to, we'd have to distinguish if that was.
Towns that have that place.
Road, drug-driven or if it's actually there. Oh, yeah. It was written in the middle of the drought, they were.
And I'm not sure if I want anybody to spend money on this and time on this, right? It hasn't been that, I mean, the next spring is coming and the crying. I'm sorry. The, the complaints are gonna come again, right? I mean, it's always May-June when they come, right? So. It would be nice to be prepared for that. But um. It's nice to show we're not the only ones.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, what's, what do we wanna do, number sixty-six, leave it, get rid of it? Um, I don't know what more follow-up we're asking for.
I'd say we can kill it and we can maybe add one if we wanted to, that basically says, um, you know. I, I don't know, I don't. I'm not sure if I wanna spend money on this.
Yeah, I guess I'm not either. I mean, there's enough other stuff, we can. Bigger fish to fry, I think. Alright, I'd say retire number sixty-six unless there's anybody who feels otherwise.
Fun.
Uh, number sixty-seven, about getting a, removing that no-salt sign closer to exit ten. I don't know what it would be required, maybe that's something you can go over with Jamie too, or. Um, I haven't, I, I do, I need to get somebody. I mean, I didn't talk to and. Right. That was something. That I threw on the map, there actually isn't even a salt sign out there. We would need to get permission to have signs out there in the first. No, if you coming down from exit ten. Coming down Industrial Drive towards Continental. There is a, there is a, it either says restricted salt area or something, there's a yellow sign there. It's all the way by where slate is.
It's almost at the bottom.
It's almost, it's almost at the intersection of, of industrial and continental. So it's not one of our wellheads? No. Okay. Not a wellhead sign. It's a yellow sign that says either, I don't think it says no salt, it says.
No, I think it's.
It was, it doesn't, it's.
Begin reduced, something like.
No, I think it said no salt.
It just says no salt?
I think it says no salt area. And, and I'm at, I drive by the sign, I get to the intersection, I look and it's a pile of salt. Every time.
And obviously all that water is.
So that, that's one question is, why is there salt in a no-salt area? And the other thing is, why is there a no-salt sign? Like. A tenth of a mile past where the divide, the watershed divide is. Alright, I was totally not. Next time you drive by. Cause I was actually thinking it was, it was. Unless they took it down. I thought your question was driven for this, from the salt maps where I had. No. Checks for. No, this is the sign that's actually there. Okay, no, I didn't, I didn't realize that, okay. Doesn't seem like it's in the proper place, is all I'm saying, it should be. Alright, good, we'll still leave that one on. Sixty-eight, investigate funding available for artificial recharge and Mitchell Woods Engineering. Let me remember that one. So, looks like we are moving forward on that with Keith and uh, oh, you know where, I think I might have thought of this because. A long time ago, we applied for a grant. For A R. I think Jamie applied for it. It was like the two hundred plus thousand dollar thing he's talking about. And I. Think it was on the table that we were possibly gonna get awarded it. And then. I know I led the charge on not moving forward on that, I'll admit. At the time. Just cause I didn't think we had enough information on it, but I don't know if we could like resurrect that grant application. I mean, he's talking big numbers here, so if we can offset that. Some grant. What was the source water protection? I'm just thinking we got denied for that one, no one. Really? I think. Yeah. Equality, I don't think we qualify for that one. Well, I think we got denied because I wasn't quite in favor of it. And uh. Yes, got wind of that.
It's your fault then.
It is, I think. I will. Still now, now that I've come full circle and wanna see if we can get it back again. Going back to the well too much. Um. So. Why don't I ask Jamie if, if, uh, cause he, we just let him on a charge to give us a scope of work, right?
Yep.
Ask him if there, and is, this might be something he's doing in. Several months from now, so maybe there's an opportunity to. Ironically, see if that grant is available again, or whatever grant that was. But it was a source water perfection grant or something, I don't remember what it was, but. One of those.
Yeah.
We follow Jamie on that?
Like, yeah.
And I can, I can call him too, if he wants to call me. I call him probably once a month. Alright, so we can move on to old business. Anybody have any old business?
Real quick, I'm sorry, John, can we go back to the ones that you wanted to add tonight? I have three of them.
Oh, you do? Alright, yeah, sure.
Um, under the finance review, the first action item is for a more granular breakdown of the actual costs and savings. Um, and the second one, under the same category, is to talk to legal in regards to the benefits of paperless bill, or of, offering benefits. For paperless billing. For, or penalties for using traditional paper.
Yep.
And then the third one, um, was to create a policy regarding changeout. That was under number three.
Yes, that's, that's for M V D management.
Media changeout?
Yeah, yeah, to create a policy, right? We did have a couple more, uh, as far as the proposal. But that's for the budget session, I don't think we need an action item for that as far as. The holiday situation and so on.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna have that. Thanks for bringing that up, Amanda, I forgot all about it. Alright, so we good with that one, we'll um, old business. Anybody have any old business?
Nope.
Uh, we kinda covered everything and the other stuff that I had written down here, so that's good. Uh, new business. Anybody have any new business?
Would anybody be opposed to merge, uh, twelve and thirteen? Because twelve really is the review of old business, right?
It's a good point.
It just keeps the agenda of, you know, five minutes shorter.
Well. Uh, there may be old business topics that are not on the action items. But um. I, I think the action items is its own standalone table.
Okay.
I don't. Um. Any other new business? No. The only thing I wanted to put out there, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it, but we kinda touched on it today is um. If. It makes sense to look at. Putting um. Resin on.
We, we, I, I think. I think we need to look into.
Yeah, so the only reason I bring it up is, is. Probably to have Underwood do a um. Just like a very cursory, what would be required, what size vessel we would need. And, and I think so, I've been looking through the previous designs that they did. Like a building for Wells Formify, they had a, a future addition, they had two resin vessels in there. I don't know that we need two resin vessels. This isn't for compliance.
Well, yet. We're back to the same issue we always have, eventually it might be, right?
Almost wanna leave no lag on those, wouldn't you? For changeout?
Uh.
Well, you, absolutely, there would be a lead.
I guess you could argue we add one now for.
I know.
Because we want to and leave room for a second one when we have to.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out, do we want them to do like conceptual? I. I don't know how, when we wanna implement this, you know? Uh.
It would be nice to know if this is a. You know, six or seven-figure expense, you know, or eight-figure expense.
Right, so. So I don't know if that's something we, we, we need to add. That evaluation would need to be added to the budget, engineering budget. And I don't know what we're talking about, ten, fifteen grand, I don't know what seems. It's still on. Pete, what do you think? You still there?
Not to put you on the spot.
Oh, there he is.
Got my water still. I wish it was a beer.
Did you catch what we were just talking about?
Yeah, you, you, well, why don't you, you were talking about, you know, yeah, uh, how much it would cost to add resin on to these facilities?
Yeah.
Yep.
Like, uh, what, what type of engineering budget, just preliminary scope of work, like a feasibility study? Um.
Yeah.
What size vessels, you know, what size addition? I know, like, the plants have a, a picture shown, like. Future addition.
Yeah, that was just, that was just a guest of it box.
Exactly, so, you know, I don't know, something a little more firm than that at this point.
Yeah, I could look at that and get you, get you a number for that.
Alright.
Yeah, I'll write.
Talk to Keith about it.
Yeah.
I guess, would it be for all three of our plants, right?
If we're gonna spend the money, might as well get.
Yeah.
What it would be for each plant, instead of going back once again and getting it one at a time.
Where was the future expansion at Wells seven and eight? Was that just behind the building bumped out? There's really no room.
Yeah, you don't, you don't, um, we used up all the area that had that rammed aggregate peers in it. You know, so the stabilized base, so you have no room there for. So if you did anything there, you would have to do something additional with the rammed aggregate beers on that one. You know, to.
But the room to do that would be further back, cause you got, you're kinda bounded by wetlands and.
Yeah, and so, so, um, um, you know, that, that's sort of the, the, some of the question, I don't know how. You know, if they wanted to do that close to the building, could they do it close to the building without damaging the existing building? That's, you know, that's one thing. If, if they did, there is room behind it, so. We, um, you know, to have sort of a, you know, a separate building area, maybe we just need a rammed aggregate pier. You know, area to support the building, but you can have a sort of a hallway building between it that doesn't really carry that much weight. You know, and maybe you do it that way.
Alright.
So we would look at that.
That's something that I think you want maybe include in your.
Yeah.
Evaluation.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we were looking at one time putting the infiltration basin behind the build, and then we ended up moving it across the driveway. Or across the access road, so that's good, so that's out of the way, so you do have that area back there that is, you know, it's fairly decent sized, you know?
Right, right, yeah. Alright.
Yeah. And I don't know, you know, the, I, I'm always wondering, you know, so yeah, they, you know, right now is, um. GAC and resin are your treatment, you know, type of things for PFAS. I'm wondering, you know, do new technologies come out within, you know, next few years that, you know? That are, are better, you know, I don't know, you know? With this emergency contaminant, I imagine some people are doing some, you know, research and development and stuff to, you know, to kinda hit that market. Make some money, so.
Right.
Wondering if, if, if there is gonna be something out there, but.
So the only thing I know is I'm, I'm hearing that the resin is better as short chains. So it almost makes sense, we could polish off the GAC, cause the only thing coming through would be the short chains. So it wouldn't be competing with the long chains like the carbon is.
Right.
You know, so.
Uh, well, that is maybe something to consider too, right? When we talk about the, 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 the vessel size, we're not trying to take all the PFAS out of the water. With that polishing vessel, we're only trying to take the short chains out.
Yeah.
Right, because the traditional ones are already being held back by, by the GAC.
So if we, if we change out the GAC. We change out the GAC frequently enough, then the only thing coming through the lag GAC vessel. Will be the short chains. Cause the long chains will be removed. We still haven't broken through PFOA at all.
Well, you should, but we should filter after the lead vessel, the GSC vessel, in order to protect the lag GAC.
No, I would do it after both. I would do is, cause then you could load GAC. More.
Right now, you don't have piping to do what you wanna do, Wolf, is go from, um, GAC to resin, back to GAC and L. Yeah, I'd, I'd look at the piping, but right now it's not set up that way. The plans do have set up with, uh, pipes going out of the building for going from, uh, GAC. To some polishing system and then back in, so those, those do have some stub pipes out that we can do that with.
I had thought of your, I had thought of that before, to do what you just said, put it in between GAC vessels, but.
I guess the concern I would have is, if we polish after the lag vessel, are we preoccupying space in the? Lag vessel with short chains, they could be picked up, they could be used.
To pick up the longer.
Pick up the long chains. And are we shortening the life cycle of the lag vessel all the way?
By doing that, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I know, that's.
Well, that's what we have to saturation curse for, right?
So it's right, the resin, if it was in between, you.
Then I don't think you would ever load last.
Right, you, you protect the lag vessel, the, the.
Then what, why do we?
I don't know, it would be a lag vessel at that point, then it would just be a, an altered it. I don't, that's why. Would you potentially, if you had it in between, would it be in reverse, in other words, like your, your longer chains? You know, it doesn't work as well, but would you potentially taking space up on that? In the resin, if it was in between, is it kinda the same, just?
Right, so now your longer chains would be. Taking up the resin's capacity.
Right.
Alls I know is resin is particularly good at the short chain. And I, in my, in my feeling is if the only thing breaking through, if it ever breaks through the lag vessel are the short chains. That resin would probably last a long time, if that's all it's getting loaded with, it's the short chains, which is what it's really good at removing.
But the only problem with resins is you have, uh, you can't have higher chlorides. And I know like well, four and five, you have higher chlorides there.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the levels at seven, eight, two, nine are high enough to be affecting that, so. If it is too high, I don't know if you would have to do some kind of, you know, pre-treatment before the resin to try to get rid of the chlorides.
Yeah, well, I don't think that there is anything other than R O that does that, but.
Yeah.
Um, so I've been working with Joe Klimic from Purelite, and he has approved resin for. Chlorides on projects I'm working on, they're in the six hundreds.
Oh, really? Okay, yeah.
So maybe that's not such a concern. I think he, he, so he warranties bed life, he did reduce the warranty on that, but not like significantly on this one project. I was kind of shocked because I remember what you guys said, and it does say right in the Purelite's literature, two hundred maximum recommended.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. But he still said it'll still work, it's just gonna reduce the life a little bit. So, something I'm thinking of, maybe we can also do a tiny little pilot test. Where we just take affluent, run it through. A tiny little, uh, resin vessel and see what happens, and we, we can talk about that at some other point, but. That, that's something where we can actually get some real data and see how it reacts, you know what I mean, on a small scale. Could scale it all down, flow rate, size and everything, so. And, and again, this is maybe something we might wanna have in a budget or something, to add that into, into the budget, we can talk about it at the next budget meeting. So, alright, that's good, I think that's all.
Yeah, and there's another thing you might wanna, uh, you know, just, uh, consider on, sort of on that same line is, um, you know, piloting. You know, if, it looks, we're gonna have, it looks like we're gonna have extra money left for the, um. The seven, eight, you know, two, nine plants, do you wanna, uh, you know? Put in, you know, the, the piloting columns and stuff in, in, I know you're putting those in at four, five, do you wanna? Be looking at putting those into, um, seven, eight and two, nine, you know, then you at least you have them there and, you know, you have some budget to. To hit that if you want, so that's just something to consider.
Now, are those columns, are they sized already, a certain size and everything, or, um?
I believe they were, yeah, I figured, Ron, do you remember?
I was just gonna ask you the same thing, I don't, I don't know if they're all, I mean, I, I don't know if the columns. That we need to build for four and five are sized for that, those vessels or not.
Yeah, I know that, the RSS, RSS CT or whatever that is. They, you know, those are very skinny columns and stuff, and you really, and you can't get. What, when you put the, um, resin in there, really doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't work, you have to have something bigger than that, you know, so, but that was, you know, they were running those tests with. You know, limited volume of water, so when, you know, could we had to ship it down to them, but I think if, you know, with, um. You know, if you're gonna have some columns and you're just running it out to waste, you can have something bigger, I'm not sure what you need for that. I'd have to check with Lynette on that one to find out.
Okay. I don't know, let's, let's bring that talk back another time when we know how much money we have left over, what we wanna do with it. If we wanna do anything with it, that's a good point.
Okay.
Uh, alright, uh, any other new business? Not superintendent report?
Like anything that hasn't been talked about on here already.
Actually, can I just jump back in a second on that proposal? Do you want just like a rough number? Just for budget purposes, or do you want a formal proposal?
I guess we're just looking for something like if we wanted to put it in the capital improvement plan.
Okay, so more of a rough number and stuff, or what it would cost, okay?
Yeah, you know, is it a half million, is it a million, is it? Whatever.
Okay, oh, but like for our proposal, for our work, do you want it to be a formal, formal proposal, or do you want us just, uh? You want just like a number, is it gonna be, you know, twenty-five or thirty or fifty grand, something like that, do you want that number, or do you want? A formal, uh, proposal?
I think we're looking for that number to put in, in the budget, which we're finalizing like in a week or two, right?
Okay, so you're looking for more of a final, uh, a, a good, a good number then, okay?
Um, if you can tell us what, what, what a value would be for the, for the ESR, what? You don't have to actually have the ESR done.
Right, yeah.
But if you can talk it over with Keith or something and figure out what level of effort, is this a? A ten thousand dollar effort, or, you know, something like that?
Yeah.
At least have a number that we can plug in to the budget, I guess, what I'm thinking.
Yeah, okay, so you're looking for that also within a week or so?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we. But we have last budgets session, you know, or was there one more idea?
I thought she said next week.
Yeah, it's the seventh. It is next week, but do we have another one?
I think that's the third.
That would be the third, cause I'm thinking we have.
That's it for us.
Okay, so you need something then by the end of the, this week then?
That, that would be good if you can do it.
Yeah, yeah, I can get, uh, uh, yeah, I can just get you just a number then, yeah, okay.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay, super.
Thanks, thanks Pete. So, anything in your superintendent report?
But you know, the Brian Maker. Actually, the other thing is that, uh. We are assisting the towns, I know I mentioned before that we're gonna give the town a hand, still power. So it did give, give you a chance to get that, uh, contract finally done, and, uh. We have two staff members that are maybe interested in, that are interested in, that are gonna be helping out the town and, and there.
So how's that going? Is the town paying them, or are they paying us to pay them?
They're gonna pay us, so we're gonna go by the schedule rates.
Oh, really?
For overtime and, and, and all of that regular hours, overtime and. They will be, we'll be basically billing them for that time.
So it's still gonna show up in their MBD paychecks?
Yeah, we'll be paying them directly, we're.
Okay.
Basically, the contractor set up that we're covering their workings, any, any conversations to the employee, we're covering. Anything if liability wise.
Yeah, you guys got all that squared away and everything.
That's gonna fall in town, uh, basically covering for the bottom, uh, vehicle insurance.
Say.
Okay, repeat that again, as far as workers come, who's covering that?
We're covering workers.
I was gonna say, right, it's, has to be.
When they're driving to a town vehicle, if they were to. Rub a lawn, Vietlax or anything like that, that's on. That's called on them.
There was something in our packet too about.
Commissioners also.
I can bet you'll take anybody.
Hundred bucks a month, plow?
That's right.
Be a deal for them.
Probably get you on a temporary, uh, yeah.
Uh, what was in our packet about the main relocation DOT?
Yeah, that was very.
Yeah. Remember we went to. Back when we were, for. And then you went with a meeting with, with us down to, uh, a big coffee to the.
Yeah, that was over at, uh.
At the boulevard. Was it that one, or was it this highway?
Well, there was one also at, um, Boston Post Road there by the church, wasn't it?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, that, yeah, so it's Boston Post Road, it's called the Boulevard, there's apparently gonna be some conflicts. So we're gonna need, uh, some engineered plans and how we're gonna handle those conflicts and stuff.
Is this affecting anything other than piping? So that, that letter that I read here from. From, uh, from the New Hampshire DOT.
Yeah, where the heck was that?
But that was for the Everett Turnpike, that wasn't for, for one-on-one.
So there's both, this.
Right, right.
There's gonna be, it's just a couple things going on, Everett Turnpike, yes, as well, there's gonna be conflict, could possibly cause, we don't know.
Yeah, this letter was about Everett Turnpike.
Right, right, right.
I just received one, it never made it in the packet for, uh, I think it's about after the pack. Or, uh, and Boston Post as well. So this, there's a few projects that are being bid right here, a couple projects that are being bid right now.
So there's two ways that they handle it, right, about the paying for it. The heck is it here? Municipality be responsible for main construction costs and all design, engineering, inspection, construction, engineering.
You can go through their contractor, we can do it.
But I guess my question is, is any of, is, this is just water lines, right, there's, there's no building or. A pump station or anything affected, right?
Just water line.
Just water line. Moving a water line, basically.
Basically, for the highway, we're, we're actually. Gonna put a. Require them to test pits first, to make sure that we are. Even if we are in, we're not really sure what. If we're gonna be in, in, uh. Conflict or not. So the widening the road, we don't, we don't know how wide those sleeves are, so we have to extend the sleeves, but we may not, so it's.
So we got as built on location, but not that necessarily, that's probably.
A bunch of work, when they're looking for five valves, try to. A bunch of stuff that I could find.
I, I was almost wondering if you, if you needed to run it by us, which. Which way you wanna go on this, you just mentioned something about, we can either do it ourselves, or pay the contractor to do it, that's doing the work or something, that.
Yeah, so we, we.
How do we normally?
We can work into their contract and they would, we would pay for.
Have we been, have we done this before? Is it, is there a convention you normally follow that let them do it, or do we normally do it, or depend on the site?
I, I mean, it makes sense, you know, rather than their project, let them do it, if you say. I, I would say we see some savings there for us to have, you know, a different contractor committed to do this, and I think.
Oh, that's true, yeah, yeah.
We did it, we don't have the personal bibble of.
Alright, that's basically what I was asking.
Yeah, I, I.
Alright, that makes sense. Alright, uh, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, questions from the press or public? If we see anybody on the lines?
Look like it, we, uh. At the chat box or anything, just before, I don't see anything.
Alright, so, uh, the next meeting, was it February, was it twenty-third or twenty-third?
Uh, Dawn, I'd like to just add something on the DOT side of it, when we were talking with them. Um, they're planning on extending, uh, you know, three lanes all the way down from, you know, the toll booth. Down to, um, you know, exit ten there, or actually even south of exit ten, all the way down to exit eight. You know, and they're doing that in multiple phases, so wherever you have a pipe crossing route three, you're gonna be needing to do something. Um, so that first, the first phase that they're working on is, uh, exit twelve north. And you have one crossing at Priscilla, and that's the one Ron was talking about, but then there was one just south of exit twelve at. What's that street called, Ron?
Um, the cross by the, um.
You had to ask me that now, Harris, Harris Ave, and, uh.
Not the one that goes through the premium outlets? And then.
No, no.
Crossing. We got a bunch. Priscilla Lane, we've got Harris Ave, you have, uh, Wire Road Crossing, you have a boost like, a boost like road crossing. Done with the Legion, crosses there, as well as the premium outlets.
Does that Babousac, uh, cross on the bridge, or is that under the road?
Under the road.
Okay, so you're, you're, the one at the mall is probably good, because that was already three lanes when they put that sleeve in there. So I think you're good on that one, but any other one along there, there, you know, so it's gonna be, you're gonna see. You know, multiple projects coming along with that, so. This first project that we're doing on the Everett is gonna do Priscilla, but we're also gonna be doing test pits for the Harris one. Which is right where the. Which is right where the toll booth used to be, you know, on the on-ramp going south on the effort, every Everett Turnpike. At exit twelve, it's right in the same area, and then you, then you're gonna have other ones going down, so. They're gonna be doing this, so that that whole area is gonna be under construction for a few more years.
There is Harris and Priscilla.
Okay, so they're gonna piece out in their contract what the proportion of M V D's cost is gonna be?
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna have bid items in there for the specific work for you, and then, yeah.
What what do you think that's gonna be? Like twenty, thirty thousand more?
Yeah, so the Priscilla one, the the work is gonna probably be, you know. I doubt your sleeve, they're gonna be winding in the lane, so. What is that? No, I'm I'm just guessing that, you know, on a turnpike lane, it's what, fifteen feet wide or something? You know, they're gonna be extending that out, and you have to have your sleeve. Far enough that you can put a two-to-one slope off the edge of pavement, and you have to extend at least to that point, okay? So I doubt you're that far off, you know, so if you, if you're. Meeting code right now, that means you would have, that sleeve would have to be fifteen feet further than what it show or was supposed to be, you know? So I, I'm kind of doubting that you have that on both sides, and if you do, that's great. If not, what it's gonna have to be is you'll have to dig down, uh, you know. If the valves are too close to the uh, the work, you would have to install new valves outside of that, so you can isolate that area. You would have to come in there, pull out the pipe by the sleeve, weld on new sleeve. Put new pipe back in there again, and then reconnect back up, which is probably gonna take some vertical bends to do that. So it's.
So this is because they want, they want sleeves under there. Is that what the reason is?
Exactly, yeah. So you have a sleeve under there right now for the pipe, but, you know, they want, they wanted to extend that sleeve back. So if you ever have to do any work on it, you have that two-to-one slope down to the extra base, and so their edge of pavement will never get disturbed.
There is also a conflict at Harris. There could potentially be a conflict, so the test pits are needed. Over in Harris Ave in uh. I got walking through on my mind, I know it's not that, um. It's the other side where the toll building is across from Harris Ave, um, there could be a uh retention pond in there or a uh. It could potentially be, that water may could go through there, so that, the test pits are needed on that end as well.
Talk about cutting that to five or six feet down, Ron, wasn't it that?
I believe so, yeah.
All right, so we're responsible for the cost of that relocation?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I wasn't sure exactly what.
I believe they would pay for a portion of it, but that means all that's not, we're gonna be.
Yeah, this factor in the design. Okay.
Yeah, you'll so, you'll just be seeing those for the next, next few years as they go down through there.
Right.
But, yeah, but they, they, they want to get these two done quickly, the Continental and uh, that first section of the Everett Turnpike.
All right, that's all we have, um, like we said, next meeting, February twenty-third. So if no one has anything else, it's contained a motion adjourned.
It moved.
Motion by Will, second by Paul, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We'll see you in February twenty-third. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys.